where you can watch from there. So if you're not speaking, I just ask, give up your seat and make more room. Make your way to the auditorium. I appreciate it. We'll be starting here in about a minute. Thank you.
I will call the Moses Lake City Council meeting to order today, Tuesday, May 9. Citizens who'd like to address the council must complete a blue speaker request card you'll find in the vestibule. Give it to our city clerk, Debbie Burke, over on the side there. You'll be called on at the appropriate time to make your comments. If there are any students in the audience, and we're not done by nine o'clock, we'll take a short break and sign your form so you can go home. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor Myers. Councilmember Stog.
Present.
Councilmember Ack.
Present.
Councilmember Fancher.
Present.
Councilmember Madewell.
Present.
Councilmember Swartz.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
Present.
Mayor Myers.
Present.
All are present.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does any council member wish to move a consent agenda item to a business item for individual discussion and vote, or make other modifications to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I accept the motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. The council invites citizen comments to hear from the public on matters before the council or relevant to the council's business. The council values free expression of all points of view as an important democratic value to this community. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes. If others have already expressed their views, you may simply indicate that you agree with the previous speaker. The council expects respect for those who have positions with which one may disagree, so debate or interactive discussions are strictly prohibited. Please refrain from applause after each speaker. Only address your comments to the council and not to staff or the audience. And make sure that your phones are turned to silent if I didn't mention that previously. Council may request staff research comments received for potential future action. Please take private conversations outside. When you are called to speak, please begin with stating your name and city of residence. We do not need street address for the record. We have received multiple speaker request cards. There were a few that did not have a topic. If your topic is about the homeless, just hold your comments until that point. I'm going to start with Victor Lombardi. Again, you have three minutes to speak on the matter.
Three minutes.
Three. It'll be three.
All passed.
Okay.
We have Serena, and your last name starts with a B. I cannot pronounce it. I think you're remote.
The one that's in your remote, we have to say they're remote.
Okay. We'll come back to that. Serena, are you on? Can you unmute? Serena, the floor is yours. You may begin with your name and city of residence. We can come back to you, Serena. We'll try again in a minute. David Hunt.
Is it for the homeless or not?
Are you speaking on homeless?
Yes.
We can just wait till that matter?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Kenton Spotted Bear.
I'd be, I'd like to speak on homeless.
Rory Colste.
Homeless.
Alyssa.
Yeah.
Michael Holmes.
Holmes.
And Rhonda. Serena, are you still on if you wanted to speak? One last chance. Okay, we'll be moving on. The mayor's report, I have a couple proclamations to read. I'll start with the American Public Works Week proclamation. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are vital, importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city Moses Lake. Whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals, who are federally mandated first responders and the engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and the children in the city of Moses Lake to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works, first responders, and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, the Moses Lake City Council, to hereby designate the week, May 21st through the 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week, I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. I get a round of applause for our public works professionals. We also have Police Officer Week proclamation. There's a few in the audience, so thank you for coming. To recognize National Police Week 2023 and to honor the service and sacrifice of how those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Moses Lake Police Department. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 23,785 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas 556 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 224 officers killed in 2022 and 332 officers killed in previous years. Whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the Moses Lake City Council will observe May 9th through 20th, 2023, as National Police Week in the city of Moses Lake, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Round of applause for officers. We do have a vacancy for an unexpired term of a city resident position on the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Services Board. That was posted yesterday. Applications are due Tuesday, May 23rd. So if you have a passion for parks and recreation and love Moses Lake, I urge you to apply. Does council wish to have any business brought to a future meeting? Hearing none, we can move on to the city manager's report.
Good evening, council and mayor. First item on the agenda is the Indigent RV Parking Location Recommendation. In an overview, in May of 2019, in response to the 2018 Martin versus Boise case, city council provided direction to staff to ensure the city was able to enforce Moses Lake Municipal Code 9.18 in regard to camping on public property. In 2020, through the use of COVID emergency funds and the city's portion of the document recording fees collected by Grant County as a part of the Grant County's requirements to carry out the plan to end homelessness and the homeless task force in utilizing recording fee dollars. The Sleep Center was established in 2021 and is operated by Hope Source. Each year, the point-in-time count.
Well.
Is carried out to be consistent with state law for the use of recording fee dollars, and it establishes the homeless household count in the county. The Sleep Center provides shelter, if the Sleep Center provides shelter that exceeds pit count for 2023 for Moses Lake, and the count was 38 units at the Sleep Center versus 37 in the pit count. The Long versus Seattle case in August of 2021 has provided additional requirements of cities to ensure that persons living in motor vehicles are protected under the Homestead Act. In 2022, city council authorized a feasibility analysis that would look at location options for the Sleep Center due to an expiring lease, and this process was utilized to see if motor vehicle RV issue could be resolved simultaneously. With city council direction to extend the lease of the current site and the recommendation of the operator to not co-locate uses, staff brought forward options for these vehicles at a work session on March 28th. In review of options, staff reviewed all city-owned properties and reviewed opportunities with other agency properties, U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, Moses Lake School District, Grant County. Locations were reviewed with city council, and a recommendation was made for a temporary location adjacent to the city's dog park at the regular meeting of April 25th. City council directed that the Ad-Hoc Committee hold a public hearing to review all the options and hear from the public. The public hearing was held May 2nd, and public input was received in regard to locations with significant opposition to the location adjacent to the dog park. The Ad-Hoc Committee was in favor of the former city firing range. Staff asked to review several potential liabilities with city council in executive session prior to full city council action, which is expected at this meeting. You have options for you in regard to that action. The RVs on Central Drive were provided a 30-day notice to vacate on April 24th. At the May 23rd regular meeting, staff will provide updated operating rules for an RV location should you choose one this evening, and an updated policy for impounding vehicles if vehicles are abandoned. In regard to the firing range issue, we have a longstanding EPA Superfund site. The city actually initiated action against the federal government and a consent decree that is a city, the city is a party to, is a part of the overall management of the Superfund site. Through that consent decree, the city assures the EPA that it will do nothing to further the environmental degradation or do anything that would compromise the cleanup actions in the Superfund site. The firing range is within that institutional control boundary. The firing range is also a form of firing range, where lead was utilized in that process. So should city council want to move forward with the firing range site, there is an additional process that would need to be gone through. It is currently zoned industrial, which precludes this use. In addition, there would be environmental remediation and analysis that would need to be done of the site. And at this time, it is not staff's recommendation that we move forward with the firing range site specifically for those reasons. We would be putting a vulnerable population in an area that would be precluded by our consent decree and our agreement with the EPA. The second option that was evaluated at the public hearing and by city council was adjacent to our Ops facility on Road 4. So that is an option for council this evening. A further option, and I'm very pleased that we have county commissioners in the audience this evening, the homeless task force has been reconstituted. There would be the ability at this point, with the notice being provided to the vehicles on Central Drive, we could utilize our existing parking code to continue to, they would be moving off of that site, and then we would be enforcing our parking code and impounding those vehicles that we are able to through an updated code. So that would give us time, if we wanted to convene a group with the homeless task force and Grant County, to look at sites throughout the county. This is not just a Moses Lake issue. The Sleep Center has provided a respite so that our other communities can also work with the homeless. It's provided a means of connecting homeless people to services for the other communities in our counties. So this really is a countywide issue as well. So before you this evening, council has the opportunity to choose one of the locations identified, or to authorize staff to convene a group to further the search, and at this point, we would just follow through with the notices to vacate the Central Drive location and manage through our existing parking ordinances on street. So I put that forward for your deliberation, and we know we have many public comments to be received.
Before I open the floor to the public, is there any preliminary comments or questions from the council? Councilmember Fancher?
So parking regulations, so we have regulations that, and I've looked at quite a few of them, and my concern, meetings before as well as I was at the last special session, one of my concerns has always been that we do this correctly. One of them is, I believe, no matter where we set this up, it's not a requirement they go there. It's a, it's a location that they can go, and I'm concerned they may choose not to go, and if we don't fix our ordinance and codes, then all we're potentially doing is moving them to another location in the city if our parking regulations aren't, and codes aren't refined. So while I want, I want the problem gone, which might be a big ask, I'm more concerned that we don't have the hammer to make it happen. So I guess I would look to legal right now in our, in our, in our regulations and parking requirements and all of the things that we already have in place. And I think you kind of know where council is on this, I believe, or at least this councilman is on this. We, we are in agreement that we have an issue with RVs parked where they shouldn't be parked and being lived in where they shouldn't be lived in. And I want to feel like, yeah, they vacate. I know what happens if they can't move. If they can't move on their own, then we get to impound them. But those that can move, if they don't like where we're putting them, get to move somewhere else, correct?
Correct. So just to kind of recap what you currently have in your municipal code, can everybody hear me? I'm trying to talk right into it. Is that better? Little bit? So right now, you have in Chapter 10.12, no parking, RVs would be prohibited from parking in any of your residential zones, period, on any public right-of-way. So you have that existing in 1012. In Chapter 10.16, you have parking restrictions on any vehicles over 10,000 pounds gross vehicle weight, and you have self-propelled RVs, so it wouldn't include a fifth-wheel trailer, but motor homes are prohibited on public right-of-way for continuous use exceeding 24 hours. And then you've got your Residential Vehicle Storage, Chapter 8.52, which prohibits the storage of RVs, including fifth wheels, boats, and trailers, within the residential zones on private property, except in limited areas, without a permit. And last, you have your camping ordinance, which was enacted in response to the Boise decision and the issues that the city experienced in 2019, 2020 with the excessive camping on public property and rights of way. That was adopted and prohibits camping and the storage of personal property associated with those campers on public property without a permit, and there is an exception, you can get a permit from the city manager, which cannot exceed 14 days. So that's what you currently have in your code. There is no restriction, the courts have been clear about that, about your ability to enforce your parking regulations. The issue, as we've talked about, is what happens when you do enforce? And several jurisdictions have implemented various processes to try and grapple with similar issues in their communities, and some of them have been more successful in terms of not resulting in litigation, and others, like the city of Lacey is one of the most recent ones, who's been sued for enforcing their parking ordinance where they were requiring permits to park on public rights of way. So you can enforce, it's not entirely risk-free, but you do have that ability currently within your municipal code. Did that answer your question?
Kind of. So you look here, like in the residential areas. It talks about making sure that no parking designations on various, various city streets. Does that mean a whole bunch more signs?
No. So those uses, like the RV parking on public right-of-way in residential zones, is an outright prohibition. So you don't need to sign every residential street. The ones that you're looking at are specific streets that have been designated for special reasons, no parking.
Okay.
I.e., there isn't enough space to allow parking on both sides of the street, or there are some safety considerations where we, through the city engineer, has determined to post those no parking.
So it's really about enforcement.
Correct.
Our code is strong enough to, I mean, we have the right code, we need to make a decision to enforce.
Yeah. I would, I would suggest that we make a few amendments to the impound ordinance to address some of the issues that are related to impounding vehicles that are being used as residences.
Yes. It's been a very long and difficult conversation. For that, I apologize to everyone in the audience, and we will take all of your comments. So going back to the statements and questions that Mark was going with, you did mention a 14-day period somewhere in there. Can you explain again what that specifically pertained to?
So that is in your camping ordinance, and there is an exception to the anti-camping on public rights of way. If you are issued a permit, I believe it's to the city manager that you would make application, and the city manager does not have the authority to grant that kind of permit for longer than 14 days.
Okay. But we can make it for some time less than 14 days if we so chose as well, correct?
So the general impound for vehicles in Washington State requires a minimum of 24 hours' notice before you impound a vehicle, unless the vehicle is in a, in an area where it creates a public safety, like a car that, that is sitting in the middle of an intersection.
Okay. And is there, let's say somebody parks on a sidewalk and then puts personal property on the sidewalk, can the vehicle be towed at that point, or?
So potentially, depending on the specific facts, you could enforce both the storage of the personal property as well as impounding the vehicle, because your camping ordinance prohibits the storage of personal property on public rights of way as well as the parking.
And then just so we're all clear, in the case of the RVs that are currently parked on Central Drive, which is the majority of the RVs in city limits at this point, I believe, those today are parked on private property, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so when someone is trespassed from private property, is it the case that every time they have 30 days to vacate the property?
No. So when, you know, typically, public entities like the city are not in charge of enforcing trespass on private property. Private property owners, because they own property, have certain obligations that travel with owning property. One of them is to keep their property free from nuisances. So to the extent we've got some of these unlawful encampments on private property, those could be considered nuisances, and we could enforce against the private property owner. We can also, to a certain degree, help facilitate the removal of those illegal encampments on private property by working with the private property owner. That is a much more manageable process from the city perspective, because there are no constitutional rights that, that are afforded private citizens on private property, like there are with public property. So for example, with the Central Drive property, that property owner has communicated to the city that those folks are not invited guests on that property, they are trespassers, the property has been posted by the private property owner as private property, no trespassing. Our police department has been communicating with the sheriff's department about whether or not there is going to be the opportunity to issue criminal charges in the event those folks don't move within the timeframe that they were given. And if the, if there are criminal citations issued, the police department may have the opportunity then to book those defendants on those charges into the Grant County jail. Right now, and for several years prior, the county has not been taking bookings on misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor charges. Criminal trespass is, is a misdemeanor charge. So that would be one way of allowing for the removal of both persons in the property from private property.
And on the Central Drive case, there was confusion because of the physical layout of the property, and the plat maps then identified that the public easements had not been put into place. And so due to that confusion, we afforded the additional notice just from a process standpoint, more conservative protection of the city in that particular standpoint, more conservative protection of the city in that particular case.
And so in the absence of having a designated parking area for someone to camp, the code is still enforceable, correct?
Yes, it has always been enforceable.
Deputy Mayor Martinez?
I think you might have answered my question, so I'll use my daughter for an example. In her neighborhood, there's an RV that parks right next, right along their house. She's called the police to try and get them to move, and she was told they couldn't do anything about it. Is that correct?
So this is an RV that is located on private property?
It's on the street.
Oh, it's on the street?
On the street.
And is it a fifth-wheel trailer or a motor home?
It's a drivable vehicle.
Okay.
And it moves around the neighborhood, and it's consistently there in the neighborhood to the point where people are concerned about their safety and whatever else might be going on.
Okay. I would have to talk to the police department and find out what the particulars are on their end.
Councilmember Madewell?
So going, I'm sorry, going back to the permit from the city manager, and code right now says 14 days in a calendar year with the permit. And they also have to go through the police, fire department, and two departments in Anyway, is that part of what is enforceable, the 14 days per calendar year within the city?
So that provision is specific to if somebody wants to camp on public right-of-way, and they are seeking the permit from the city manager, then that permit cannot exceed 14 days.
In a calendar year?
Correct.
Just double-checking. Thank you.
My big question is, so if we enforce our parking regulations, it puts us at risk for lawsuit because of the Seattle versus Long case?
So there are certainly more legal risks, potentially, in enforcing without providing the shelter space for your pick count.
We can still ask them, but if they decide they don't want to move, we can't tow them at that point?
No, you can tow them.
We can still tow them.
Deputy Mayor Martinez?
Out of curiosity, has anybody applied for a 14-day permit?
I have not. I'm looking today, also through the police department.
Yeah, and given that Lacey is now in litigation over the permit issued for parking on public right-of-way, we'd probably want to avoid that.
So is there, so should we even have that in our ordinance? I mean, one, nobody's doing it. Two, Lacey's getting in trouble because they have it?
So that would be something to look at for the May 23 meeting and bringing back any ordinance amendments to the impound process.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fancher?
So this is kind of what I was wondering all along and trying to figure out how to solve the problem for those that choose not to want to go to the designated area. And no different than those that choose not to want to go to the sleep center. And I think, I mean, at least where I'm at on this, is if we need to do a better job of enforcement, and we need to do a better job of making sure that our code reads properly, I've had so many conversations, and thank you for all that have conversed with me, over the last, I don't know how many months, trying to wrap my head around how to do this right. It's mind-boggling. If we can handle this, I'm in the same boat. I don't like what we have going on here. I've told you guys before, I have three granddaughters, and that's who I'm doing this for. It's not for me. I mean, it's for my future, and my future kids and grandkids. We need to get a handle on what we can do to make them, those that are not following the law, follow the law. And I'm all for, you were pretty clear on what we already have in play. It sounds to me like we could tweak it a little bit, too. And then it comes down to enforcement, and I know what that means. If we're going to enforce this thing, you're going to look to us, and I'm willing to look at that. It's going to cost money, but I know we can reallocate funds towards safety, and that's the direction that Mark would like to look at. I haven't found a site yet that we've pleased everybody. We heard the other night, all about a site out at, whatever night that was, the gun range. I happen to know that there's probably a handful of people in here tonight that are going to speak on the gun range. And maybe more than that, because I got some stuff that was written that came to me. I think the only way we can take care of what I think what everybody really wants is to figure out how to enforce and enforce the codes we have. That's my opinion. I don't know what everybody else's is.
I'm in agreeance, Mark. I'm still confused trying to, we were told that we can't enforce before without risk. That's what I understood and why we're in this predicament. So I'm just trying to understand what we can and can't do, because without, if we don't have a spot for them to go, can we enforce our parking regulations? That's without risk.
At the March 28 work session that was presented to you, it's one of the more risky options. So the least risky option is to have a place for them to go. Enforcement is next in the hierarchy of risk.
Councilmember Swartz?
Yes, I appreciate your question, Don. You know, we heard earlier from Mr. Ockett, who works for the city, and he explained that there was a church, or several churches, who helped us out with the landscaping project. And I use that as an example of the citizens of Moses Lake deciding to step in and help make this city what they want it to be. As you've all heard tonight, part of this problem, and a major part of the problem, is the activities that are occurring on private property in this city. And so there has to be something done to address that, right? So this would be property owners who are involved. And so I don't know how we do that. I'm sincerely asking all of your help to bridge that gap. I think what Mark suggested tonight, what the city can do is to enforce the laws that we have on the books. Why it took us so long to get to this conclusion, I do not know, and we will certainly look into that. But, you know, if we have people who are willing to say, "We don't want this activity on our properties," that will go a long way in helping us to enforce this further. With that in mind, I think we should just wholeheartedly go with the enforcement of the laws that we have on the books. And as Mark said, if there are funds needed for that effort, then we probably need to explore that sooner than later.
Councilmember Madewell?
So for me, I'm along with Mark and with Dustin. I also believe, too, that if we give them the option and they don't want to take the option, then you have another option. It's a free choice. Either you can go where we put you, we tell you to go, or you have another option. You can either leave, or you can go where we're going to take you. So I'm also tired of kicking the can down the road. Let's get it done. Let's get it done now. So that we can move on and do other things. This is a high-priority thing, but it needs to be fixed, but it needs to be fixed now, not later. So let's get it done.
Final comments before we open up to the public? I'd like to give them a chance. Councilmember Fancher?
I guess the only thing I would say is, if we gave direction, I mean, I would ask staff, legal counsel, to please review the parking ordinances and all the ordinances and laws that surround it, and would absolutely welcome any additions to make it clear, concise, get to the point, and whatever that needs to be. And I would appreciate that, to be back for an opportunity to, because time is definitely the essence, to be back in front of us at the next council meeting for whatever we need to do to adopt. So I think that's the step that needs to happen, because I'm really concerned, short of finding a solution with our partners, like at the county, whether there's truly a location that isn't going to light the world up. I haven't found one yet that, you know, the last time we had a meeting, some of the people that lit me up over the last week probably didn't know it was an option and found out after the fact. And so I don't think there's a, you guys tell me, is there a location out there that falls within our jurisdiction that works? I said, "within our jurisdiction," because I can't find it. I mean, to me, the solution is that with the help of our citizens and us to direct, to enforce, and create something, that, to me, seems like hopefully the best issue I answer. I don't know.
Okay, we'll open up for a public comment. If the council's comments and questions is satisfied, your comments or questions, you can simply just pass. Reminder, we're going to have three minutes, and then just hold your applause at the end so that we can have a timely meeting and be out of here before 10:00, because we have a stack of cards here. Lori Messer, step up to the podium, state your name and city of residence.
My name is Lori Messer, and the neighborhoods I'm talking about is Brad and Dunn, Skyline Acres at the top of the hill. Apparently, you're looking at moving a homeless shelter onto the city Moses Lake property across from Dunn, which, I mean, if they have a problem, they have a problem. That's fine, I'm more willing to help them, but I don't want to live next to them. That's really harsh for our neighborhood. I mean, everybody's like, "What's happening?" We've lived up there for 52 years, and it's always been a great 52 years, and the houses have increased in value and everything. Something like that can really break our values down, and I have a real problem with that. That's all I got.
Try to speed things up. I'll call the next person up so that you can be ready. So first will be Joseph Moriarty, followed by Katie Walker.
Good evening, Joseph Moriarty of Moses Lake. You know, the RV challenge is one thing, but from what I've heard in the small businesses, it seems to be much more. So the comprehensive plan to reach across the board is something I think we need to bring to the table as well, and look at different options regarding outside the library. Seems to be a place where they feel comfortable, many of the homeless. Those are the ones that are wandering downtown. I don't know where else, whether it be outside the overnight center, if there could be some activities to keep them active, if not engage with others that want to help them, whether it be job training or some aspect of that. But there is also something that I've seen called rapid response, which is a partnership from communities and the public, and working with the existing police force, if not the fire department. There's usually liaisons, then work in circumstances that are sensitive to small businesses. So rather than call the police directly and have to deal with a recurrence of an individual, the rapid response team could really come in and make a difference and identify where those biggest challenges are, whether it be mental illness or if it's addiction. Certainly with addiction, we know that the system has been enabling that to continue. And I think there's some tangible solutions outside the state that have been very successful that maybe the task force could really work with others that know some solutions. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments with some suggestions like that. We greatly appreciate it. Katie Walker, followed by Rhonda.
I'm Katie Walker, and I'm Moses Lake resident. I live, well, I live in, I am. I live across the road from Road 4, the proposed area. And we have had the homeless coming up from down below all the time. They walk down Dunn Street. They're going through the mailboxes almost on a daily. They do go around Brad Street, too, but we just sit further back off the road. We don't get quite as much traffic. But they also walk through, they even have, we have ones that come through with a backpack and a flagpole, or, I mean, a fishing rod, that designates if they're dealing or buying. We've had, I mean, on my way here, on my way home just tonight, one, and his bike stopped in the trees right at the end of the city shop, and he's urinating right there. We already have a problem with him coming up. Putting them there would only make it worse. I know that we talked, or the city has actually thought about maybe making that area like a park, you know, like with playing fields, ball fields, and things like that. So this is quite a good trade-off. We've got children and grandchildren. It's a new, reviving, old community. And so I'm against that it being put there, you know, to residential and family and property values. So, thank you.
Rhonda? And then Michael Holmes, you're following?
I just mostly came here to learn about more what's going on. Oh, Rhonda, Moses Lake. I'm just a concerned grandma. You know, my grandkids play, like to play at the parks, and, you know, they can't go in there anymore because there's needles everywhere. And, you know, it's just a lot different than it was, you know, even 10 years ago as far as safety. And, you know, I was in Marshalls the other day when there was, you know, lady shoplifting and running out the store, and just, you know, all the kids seeing this, and just the chaos that has come to our town. I think, I guess my issues are just more safety, and then I was also concerned, I don't know if it's a rumor, but I heard that there was some kind of, I want to say, like $10 million to be spent on some kind of a homeless facility, that, I don't know where those monies were coming from, maybe it's just a rumor. But I'm just concerned if we build something bigger, if you build it, they will come. And I don't want more. And I'm really happy with what I've heard from the council about, let's nip this in the bud while it's little, because if we don't, it's going to explode. And I just, you know, I love our community, and I just don't want to see that happen.
Michael Holmes, followed by Alyssa.
My name is Michael Holmes. I've been a Moses Lake resident for 31 years. I have served as a high school teacher in Grant County for 21 years. I'm now retired, and I live on Brad Street, right across from the city shops. Where I've lived the entire time, we have a very quiet community of 56 homes on Dunn and Brad Street. We don't have too many problems. Yes, we've had a few, but I feel quite safe and secure in my home. Should you choose to sit on Road 4, I think I speak for everybody in my neighborhood that we will not feel safe and secure. We will feel threatened. I hope that's quite understandable, because when you bring in 1, 2, 10, that opens up the door for 20, 30, 50. Camp Hope is reborn right here in Moses Lake. What do you do with it? Okay? I understand that this is not only a Moses Lake issue, it is county-wide, okay? It is nationwide. But right now, it's become my issue. But right now, it's become my issue. You are placing this issue on my doorstep, okay? I do not believe that that is fair at all. You know, these people, these people need help, okay? That's what they need the most. They need to be reconditioned to enter society again, okay? So I'm hoping that you understand where I'm coming from, because this is now my issue. Thank you very much.
Alyssa, followed by Rory Colstein.
Hi, my name's Alyssa Cook, and I've lived in Moses Lake for my whole life. The shooting range right by the dog park, I can speak for all of us at the dog park, I go there every day, twice a day, everyone there is opposed to it, they're so upset, they're, they bring their children there, they, they bring their kids there to go play with their dogs, and, you know, them already being so close to us, they actually, it was one of the homeless people, they melted down our porta potty, and it still has not been replaced, and they do drug deals right, right across the street, we can see it while we're sitting there, and just moving them closer is going to create even a bigger issue for us. I've been going there for five years, and I would like to continue to go there, and not have to worry, like, I have to carry taser and pepper spray now, because I don't feel comfortable because of how close they are, and moving them is just creating a whole nother problem, and I don't have a yard to put my dogs in, so that is my only option for my dogs to be at, and I'm there for two, three hours a day, I was there today for two, three hours, so, thank you.
Rory Colstein, followed by David Hunt.
Rory Colstein, Moses Lake, I wanted to thank you guys for the direction that you guys have chose, sounds like, chose tonight to start to enforce the laws. Kind of feel like we are, I'm in an abusive relationship with the homeless, with the threat of, if I do something to get rid of them and get them out of my, my home, then I'm going to be the one that gets attacked and have issues, so I wanted to thank you guys, I think that's the right approach, to start to enforce the laws that we have, the rules that we have. I live by them every day, and if I have to, I think all the other citizens here in the, in the city should also follow the rules that I follow, and that we've, we've put in place, thanks.
David Hunt, followed by Kenton Spotted Bear.
Thank you, David Hunt. I gave the city manager, I believe have a copy, I don't know if the council got it, its exemptions from super fund liability through the EPA. I also spoke with them today, I don't want to waste my time on that. Mark, you asked a great question, Judy, Dustin, we have the ordinances. What I haven't heard any of you ask is, why are we not enforcing them? Is that under the city management's guidance? Why are we not enforcing them? It's, we get lost in the weeds. It's very clear, if any of you go home tonight, or anybody on the city, and there's a homeless RV parked in your yard, or your driveway, I guarantee you, it'll be gone in a half hour, right? So let's, don't pretend that they have some rights to private property, I'm tired of hearing it. It's excuses, muddying the waters for no reason. The second thing is, is very clear that the city knew they were on private property on Central Drive. They chose to do nothing with them, because they didn't want them on your guys' property. Enforce the rules. You already have the ordinances. Also, I want to talk a little bit about Long v. Seattle. It gets talked about a lot here, and the waters really get muddied. Has anybody here even read that Supreme Court case? Has nothing to do with towing a car. The Supreme Court didn't even get into that argument. The argument is over the fees the city of Seattle was charging the guy, which was $235 a day. I think we all agree that's excessive, okay? That's why they made that ruling. We can impound these cars tomorrow, you don't have to give them 30 days, so what is the city waiting for? I know it's difficult to find locations, I've been involved with all of you on that. I know there's a lot of pushback from the gun range on Randolph Road, I know you guys, I've talked to several of you, it's going to be hard for you to make a decision today. I understand that. I would encourage you to remind the city manager and the management that the one last meeting, Dustin, you brought up, to get five people from the community on the ad hoc community, never happened. So, they want us to fall under the rules you guys are making, but they don't want us to voice our opinion. And so, I would hope, and I would ask the mayor, to set a meeting, a special set meeting for next Thursday or Friday, and solve this problem. You can simply do it, that meeting will be only for this purpose, and this purpose only, and you guys can make a decision at that meeting where to move them. Thank you.
Kenton Spotted Bear, followed by Chad Edison.
Good evening, my name is Kenton Spotted Bear, Moses Lake. I work for a business that is directly across the street from the current homeless shelter, and we have been victims of quite a bit of crime. Thankfully, we have concerned citizens here in this city. We had somebody walk up to our fence line, and they started cutting it with bolt cutters, and somebody called it in. Police officers showed up, they walked up to the gentleman and asked him what he was doing. He said he was trying to get his scrap steel on the other side of the fence, to which he was asked to leave. He did. Problem is, he left with his bolt cutters. We were kind of told nothing could really happen at that point, which was quite unfortunate, and we have patched over 30 different parts in our fence. It's a big fence, but that's a lot of patchwork, quite a lot of patchwork. Not only that, but our security system has gone off multiple times, with our outside trucks being torn open, people digging through them, thankfully, they got scared off before any major damages happened. The reason I bring this up is, I just really want the city council to know that wherever we decide to move the next shelter, we need to be considerate of our small businesses, like ours, because we don't really want to spend all the time and resources dealing with this problem that initially, we kind of didn't get a say in. One day, we were just told, "Across the street, we're moving them in," which has been quite bad for business. Thank you.
Chad Edison, followed by Kevin Richards.
Good evening, my name's Chad Edison, I'm a resident of Moses Lake. This is a complex issue in front of you, and I'm not going to pretend like I have the right answers, but as I came down to the meeting from Skyline Acres, across the road from Road 4 location, I left my three-year-old daughter and my five-year-old daughter in the driveway playing with chalk, their mom's in the house, and that's a pretty safe activity right now, but if you choose to move a bunch of folks in RVs doing drugs and crime across the street from us, that's no longer a safe opportunity for us. We got a big dose of it when we played soccer this spring, right across from Central Drive, where all of this is occurring. The bathrooms are locked, the porta potty is in unacceptable shape, you got to tell your three-year-old and your five-year-old to hold it during soccer. That's not acceptable. And again, I don't have the right answers, but moving it to Road 4 is not the right answer. Thank you.
Kevin Richards, followed by Tammy Kent.
Thank you, members of the council and staff, thank you for this conquering what is a very complex and difficult issue. I just thought I'd come and give an update, which might help or hinder. The two acres that's behind the current facility, I am now under contract with, for the purchase of that property, so going back to this, there may be a better answer for the RVs, if that's what you're looking to do. I think we should kind of redo a little bit of history for 30 seconds here, and say that, you know, the city had no place for the homeless to go, it was a big issue, where they're trying to put it next one elementary school, that was a big blow-up. I knew that this site that I owned was currently, you know, had been looked at in the past to put the homeless as a location, and as what I thought was a favor, I went to the city and said, "Hey, by the way, as a newcomer, Allison, we would love to work a deal with the city and put the homeless here," and that would allow them to clean up the streets of Moses Lake. Fast forward here a couple of years, and obviously, the streets are still in a little bit of disarray, we have obviously legal issues that come with that. And I heard you, Dustin, I agree, councilman, that we need to, as citizens, step up and try to help the situation, so I have stepped up and said, "We're willing to lease this property additionally." I had a unanimous vote from every councilman on the council to re-lease the property, I think it was about eight weeks ago. I've had zero phone calls from any initiation to do so, when I think that if I was a staff member of yours, and I had heard a unanimous vote to move forward with something, that I would have probably done so in some kind of fashion. But, being that I have not heard anything for eight weeks, being that I am going to be purchasing the additional two acres, of which I would like to help you out with, I cannot sit on commercial ground without an agreement of some kind in place. And we were talking about this last time too, we said, "Okay, well, leases end," and that's true, this is a lease that does end. If you would like to renew it, the cheapest time to do that is now. If you get a month away from the closure of the lease, and I have uncertainty that takes place, the price goes up, so then this is just capitalism, and maybe an ugly thing to some people on the council, but I would like to resolve this, I'd like to put this behind us. I do have another party, not to sound like a used car salesman, but I do have another party looking at the property. I think, Dustin, you probably know that, but, point is, is that we need to resolve this in some way, I don't want this to come across as scary to you, but I do have to move forward with the property, I'd like to help, help the city out, and I'd like to move things along, but obviously, I have to do what's right first by my, my family, so I don't want to pull the carpet off from underneath you, but we do need to progress the conversation, so with that, I will relinquish my 12 seconds.
Tammy Kent, followed by Gary Mann.
Hi, good evening, my name is Tammy Kent, I'm a resident of Moses Lake, I live across, I live on Road 4, so that's why I'm here. I am also a registered nurse and a paramedic, and have dealt with the homeless out of Spokane for over 10 years, and in California. In Moses Lake, there's a lot to go on with those, with the homeless encampments, they are a nuisance, there's no guidance, they're allowed to do whatever they want, without the enforcements and doing the laws, and moving them out into the country where we have our animals that are in fields, and they're already coming across the fences and cutting fences, there's just, the enforcement needs to be there. I know the fire department has started a program that's trying to help people with continued problems with medical care or psychiatric issues, it really needs to come down to enforcing the laws, having more, if you're going to put them somewhere, that it be in an area that can't affect other people, like small businesses, or farm animals, urinating, any, you know, kids' safety, because the mental health crisis going on scene with these people, you never know what's going to happen. We've been attacked, even though they've called us, the police don't have time to get there, we don't have anything on us when we go. I think a lot of safety issues is a main factor for Road 4, our property values are going to go down. There's fires, there was also fires at the encampment in Spokane that injured several people, and that's why they had to hurry and get them to an industrial building. I just don't think the resources in Moses Lake are there for them to be out in the country setting areas, even though that's a city, a city lot, and there's an airport and things like that, it's just kind of, it's out, and there's not going to be any regulations. I agree, we also need lots of medical care for them, and the rapid response is a great idea, there's just lack of medical people that are able to do that. I'm just really concerned about our safety also, and people that live out in the country don't just have bats in their homes to protect their property, and if there's something that's going to happen to your animal, and another animal's going to, is chasing it, there goes that animal that's chasing it, it's not going to live to get to it. So, a lot of safety issues, and without a regard to public people and laws, it's just not a good idea. Thank you.
Gary Mann, followed by Alicia DeLuigi.
Gary Mann, Moses Lake. What I'm going to say, some of the points you guys can argue, and they could be argued, so I'm just, this is my opinion only. Today is about a choice, what is in the best interest of Moses Lake, or giving a free pass for the homeless to park their RVs. In the past, the homeless have won, safety of our children, homeless came first, downtown businesses, homeless is first again, city parks, again, the homeless over the public. We have a need for housing and the affordability, and we put some more taxes into place, again, that money didn't go for the public, it went for the homeless. We all have modified our behavior, and we have lost some of our rights and some of our freedoms. Abraham Lincoln said, "America will never be destroyed from the outside." If we falter and lose our freedoms, if we falter and lose our freedoms, it will come, we will be destroyed by ourselves. I didn't understand that as a young man, what he meant. I'm seeing a lot of it now. We are all losing our rights and our freedoms. It's time to put a stop to it. Thanks.
Alicia DeLuigi, followed by Tom Hickman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Alicia DeLuigi, Lisa from Moses Lake. I do want to give you an update with some solutions I've already discussed with you. This problem's everywhere, and, you know, as much as we don't want it, it's here, and we have to do something about it, and we can sit there, and we can complain about it, or we can continue to try to find common grounds and agreements in finding solutions. Recently, Tom and Judy, Senator Warnock and Representative Dent, went ahead and apprised me that with regards to the capital budget, that there's funding for a study about the homeless solutions that's occurring, and the successful homeless solutions that have occurred in Texas, and also worldwide in Finland, so kudos to that. Today, during my lunch meeting, my lunch Zoom meeting with United States Rep. Smith, I was apprised that he's, his office, as well as other United States representatives, both Republicans and Democrats, are reintroducing a Behavioral Health Crisis Center Act, whereas they'll be, pray that it gets passed, because then that will help us to have funding for smaller jurisdictions like us, so that us taxpayers in these smaller jurisdictions aren't being burdened. I do believe we have to, we have to come up with some more solutions, we do have to find somewhere to put the people in the RVs, and the people that are housing insecure, but I don't necessarily think that putting them way out in the country is going to be the best solution, for a reason stated that I'm not going to reiterate, because I do believe that we all agree with that, but the cost for having to continually tow them, the cost for, you know, if, I mean, in extreme heat and stuff like that, people dying, the cost for crimes that are occurring in our farmers, where the response for our police, where we already have shortage, is detrimental to them, I just, I don't feel very positive about that solution at this time. Also, in Seattle, one of the things that they've done is, they did, they did try to start towing the RVs, and what it did is overwhelmed the towing companies in their space, and it just basically became a huge junkyard. So that, that's an issue that we have to try to work with in finding a solution, if that's the route you want to go, and it's my understanding that the, it's not, we have ordinances, it's just there are some laws that I don't necessarily agree with, and it's my opinion that a lot of you guys don't agree with either, that are implemented, that are tying our hands behind our back, and so what we have to do is, we have to consider the potential And so what we have to do is we have to consider the potential liabilities for the enforcement that we have. And I do have full faith in my council, our council, in the city of Moses Lake, as well as all of the staff members. And I commend you guys all, because this is an extremely complex issue. But I'm doing everything I can to try to bring to the table as many solutions on every level possible. And if there's anything that I can further help you out with, please bring it to my attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Hickman, followed by John Smith.
Tom Hickman, Moses Lake resident. It's been rather interesting listening to some of these remarks, why you haven't taken this gentleman up at the sleep center's offer. That seems to me to be a rather blatant mistake. You're considering moving this place out to the firing center, out on Randolph Road, but have you considered the security risks out there? You had a gentleman talking about people cutting fences, trying to enter private property. I don't know if you're aware of the chemicals and the explosive risks out there on Randolph Road. You want to be on national news with a major chemical spill because somebody breached the security because of a bad decision? Some of those chemicals out there are lethal. One drop on your skin, and you're dead. And they're in large industrial tanks. You have General Dynamics out there, and the old Takata plant making propellant for explosives. You want people out there in that? I mean, they have security in place, but they can't control everything. And they certainly don't have the security in place to handle what you're possibly digging into here. You're also going to be out in the county there. So now you're going to be taking this burden of security and putting it on the sheriff's department. And I was a former reserve deputy sheriff, and I can tell you that they don't have the manpower. I was a reserve, and the reason I was a reserve was trying to help them plug the gaps. And you're going to be creating a situation out there on Randolph Road that you do not want to go into. That's all.
Thank you. John Smith, followed by Richard Pierce.
Yeah, I'm John Smith from Moses Lake. A lot has been covered, so I won't re-cover it. I would say regarding the parking, I've been ticketed for leaving a personal vehicle parked on the street in front of my house for more than 72 hours at a time. So unless that has changed, I don't know why that's not a factor in this discussion. So that seems like an avenue to be used in our defense. And regarding kicking the can down the road, you guys, a bunch of you guys inherited this problem because of the inaction of previous council. It's a touchy subject. We've heard from a lot of people who will be negatively impacted by whatever decisions we make. I, I like the idea of the Randolph Road location for a lot of reasons. I think that what the previous gentleman mentioned, those facilities have security. They have cameras, they have warning systems, they have security on site. We're not going to find a location that satisfies everybody, but we have to find something, we have to work within the law. But it seems that if parking ordinances are already in place, if I have to follow the rules, if I'm going to get ticketed parking in front of my own house, why does a transient person get by with it? So anyway, I won't waste any more time.
Richard Pierce, followed by Bob Russell.
Richard Pierce, Moses Lake. I'm also the vice chairman of the Airport Commission, and I just want to talk to you about that side out on Road 4. That 160 acre was originally given and deeded to the city with the idea there'd be an airport. And we, the Airport Commission agreed to have that operation facility put there, and it's been a good relationship, and they've been good neighbors, and we appreciate that. But let's face it, to put that out there, the first obstacle you'll have to overcome is the idea that the airport zone does not allow residential in it. And I don't know how much that property is still airport zone, maybe all of it. But we're dealing with people who have a little concern for other people's property or other people's rights, and I want to talk to you about safety. Airplanes speeding down a runway on takeoff or landing don't have much maneuverability, and people or animals in their way come out second best. Prop strikes on animals or people are almost always fatal. There's no walk away from them. Another thing I want to talk to you about briefly is security. We have worked for 20, 25 years to get more security out there for, with fencing and what have you, although it doesn't sound like fencing is a, is a great deterrent to these people with wire cutters, et cetera. We have asked for patrols, and I don't know exactly what the police department is doing for patrols out there right now. We've asked for patrols once a day and once in the evening. And let's face it, that airport is kind of an attractive nuisance. There's fuel out there, there's valuable things out there, there's irrigation equipment and that type of thing out there that attracts people. And we just can't afford to have these people that have no regard for other people's property or other people's rights that close to our airport. Thank you very much.
Bob Russell, followed by Christina Berg.
Honorable mayor, council members. My name is Bob Russell. Moses Lake is my home. Interesting, I'm following Richard. I wish I had a solution to your problem. I don't. I do have a recommendation. So for the past almost 50 years, I've had a hanger up at Moses Lake Municipal Airport, and it appears that that's near a site you're considering locating these transient RVs. So there are literally millions and millions and millions of dollars worth of airplanes up there and equipment, as well as several businesses. It's a vibrant, growing airport. So security at airports is always a big issue. So unless the city's planning on putting this big fence around that entire airport, similar to the one that the city has around their property adjacent to it, my recommendation, as well, as well as several other pilots that house their airplane up there, is don't choose that site. Thank you.
Christina Berg, followed by Rich Makela.
My name is Christina Berg. I live in Grant County. I live on the other side of Road 4 that you're considering putting the property in. So my question is to all of you guys, your Moses Lake ordinance is for 14 days they can park before they get towed or whatever. What's Grant County's ordinance? When they walk across the street, or they drive their RV onto Dunn or Road or Brad Street, we are in Grant County. Who's coming to help us when we call the police? How are we supposed to feel safe when your daughter doesn't feel safe because there's an RV going around her neighborhood? That's all I have to say. I know you guys got a lot to think about. Good luck.
Rich Makela, followed by Corey Carpenter.
Hello, I'm Rich Makela. I live in Moses Lake. I'm a real estate broker. I represented Ted Yow, the owner of the property on Central Drive. Worked with him for 13 years since he's owned that property. Ted has paid property tax on that property for 13 years, close to $800,000. He paid $65,000 last year. Over the last three years, I became the guy that city police or the compliance officers would call when there was a homeless camp set up and the property between Goodwill and Home Depot. They'd collect the stuff from Home Depot, they'd take it out into the field, set up camp. Three or four days later, I'd get a call from the compliance or the police, and we'd meet them out there, a victim. To clean up the property, the city would call me to have me hire somebody, Joe Savage, to go out there with a loader and a dump truck to pick up all the crap, because they couldn't do it with their hands, because there's needles and everything else. That would cost Ted 800, 1500 bucks every time. The apartments behind Smulligan's, I'd get calls, because my face is on the sign and my number, from the tenants in the apartments behind. The camp on the fence line next to the park, they'd be peeing and pooing right there. The people would walk, the kids would walk out their balcony. They'd see, I mean, literally, that they would get flashed. I mean, I had complaints about them getting flashed. So I don't know how it becomes Ted's problem to clean up the mess that they made when he's paying these taxes for all these years. But it was the case, it still is. I did meet with the police on April 24th to post no trespassing signs. The police gave the people notice. They're going to be gone, hopefully, on May 24th. On the May 2nd meeting that I attended last week, the city talked about the Jones versus Seattle Act that limited them from impounding the vehicles and the Homestead Act. And I pulled up the Superior Court's decision on that, and basically, it says right in it, I mean, the Homestead Act does not apply to the Longs case, so it doesn't apply to that. So they can impound those vehicles and not be burdened by that case. I mean, there's other stipulations. They can't charge excessive fees. They can't charge excessive fines, because they can, he can hide behind the shield of the Homestead Act on that. But they can't, he can't use a sword to threat the impoundment. But basically, I just feel that the city needs to come up with a plan. I mean, if they set up an RV park that takes, is three acres, and there's going to be, I mean, they all got cell phones, every one of them, and they're going to call all their friends, there's going to be 100 RVs that show up. I think the city needs to set up, impound those vehicles, set up an impound lot, and only the 13, nine off Central Drive, and the four others that are around, and impound them and put them in an impound yard. Don't set up a RV park for everybody to come, because it's going to look like Spokane, I guarantee you.
Corey Carpenter, followed by Andrew Copan.
My name is Corey Carpenter, small business owner here in Moses Lake, owning property. If you guys build it, they'll come. I truly believe that. And I think that this has been way too long for us to address, and I think it needs addressed sooner than later. And you guys are being watched. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Andrew Copan, followed by Alonso Galagos.
My name is Andrew Copan. I live in Pelican Point. I used to be on Redmond City's Homeless Commission. Taxpayers and residents of our city expect our elected officials to work tirelessly to keep us and our children safe and secure. We cannot tolerate the negative effects of homelessness and drug abuse in our neighborhoods and parks. Solving this issue is tough, and it's made harder by the fact that there is a lot of money to be made in the homeless industry. Some nonprofit organizations use deceitful tactics to gain sympathy from the public. For instance, there is a nonprofit I know that claims to help homeless youth. But their definition of youth is different than what most people consider a youth. They say they help youth up to 29 years old and older, while most people consider youth to be anyone under 19. Furthermore, some nonprofits brag about how many homeless people they serve without revealing how many of them they have been effectively helped out of homelessness or drug addiction. This effectively siphons money from effective nonprofits. To illustrate this, imagine you had a heart attack. Would you want to go to a hospital that handles 1,000 heart attack cases a month but has no survivors, or one that handles only 10, but nine survive? Which one would you support financially? Unfortunately, when dealing with the homeless, the bigger nonprofits, the more money it gets from government. Today, we saw a solution to help homeless people living in vehicles in Moses Lake stopped by powerful nonprofit and organizations from outside the county and state. Why did these organizations get involved in a local decision to help people and our community? How many people here believe that their motivation were really to help the homeless, the drug addicts, or our community? I, for one, don't. We all know that we need to find solutions to the problem of homelessness and drug abuse. However, the city council cannot forget their responsibility to our local residents and their children. City council must make sure that we feel safe and secure in our own neighborhoods, and that we are not negatively affected by homelessness. City council must ensure that children can play in our parks without worrying about closed bathrooms or finding needles where they play. Therefore, I urge city council to prioritize the needs of our community over the needs of homeless drug abusers. I also ask them to be cautious of those who profit from the plight of the less fortunate, and to find solutions that provide genuine support and assistance to those in need. The council needs to be bold and wise in their approach, ensuring that our homes, neighborhoods, and parks are safe and secure. Thank you.
Alonso Galagos.
Galagos. Alonso Galagos, Moses Lake. I'm not going to spend too much time, because my neighbors have already talked a lot about it. I do live up there in the Skyline Acres. It is a very nice neighborhood. I've been there about 16 years, raised a family up there. And over time, we have seen some activities up there that, you know, people have been coming down. And ever since, that other camp has gone over there by Highway 17. I just fear that if you do propose to put something up there on Road 4 by the airport, it's going to get worse. And I feared the fact that we don't, if we don't nip it right now, like you said, Judy, kicking the can, let's check the box, take care of it, and move on. Especially before the times come with these new manufacturers that are coming in, and there's going to be about, what, 75,000 people coming in next 10 years because of them, because there's going to be a lot of growth. Let's take care of this now and get it over with. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Vincent Duncan.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Vincent Duncan. I'm Moses Lake. I moved from Spokane, downtown Spokane, the city, and I have the unique ability to speak on this. There is no middle ground. You either have the law-abiding citizens or the homeless who are not abiding by the law. The law is supposed to be concrete. There isn't really much debate. If the law says one thing, that's the law. That's what that's supposed to be there for. It's not supposed to be a debate amongst people. It's supposed to be there for taking away the debate. Spokane has allowed homelessness to take over, and if that's what Moses Lake is going to turn into, we're going to lose population. We're going to lose everybody. Spokane is completely overrun with homelessness, and if that's what we let Moses Lake turn into, we're going to have nothing here, and nobody, nobody else to protect it. Thank you.
I appreciate all the comments tonight. We've been taking notes, and I would now like to open up the floor to the council for further discussion or questions of staff. Deputy Mayor Martinez.
I appreciate everybody coming and hearing again from the community that was the second site. I want to explain or be clear that my understanding was, we needed to have a location in order to enforce this trespassing law. I was pretty sure that the gunfire range, because of the issues of where it's at, and it's industrial, not residential, and we were under this timeline, and of course, it's industrial, not residential, and we were under this timeline, and of course, clearly, nobody wanted it at the dog park. So I appreciate everybody coming to let us know again that we need to try again. But it is difficult. If we're going to find a location, where will it be? Where is the community going to let it be? And we might go weeks and months before we come to a decision. But I do want to clarify with city staff before we even get that far, because this is rather confusing, and, you know, I hear, I've heard it, I've read it, I hear it and read it again. Do we need a location in order to trespass these RVs on Central Drive and any other private properties? And do we need a location for them to be at in order to enforce, I'll ask the city staff, in order to enforce our ordinances? I want as clear of an answer as you possibly can give me, because there is a lot of business that needs to be conducted for the city and not just about the RVs and the homeless. We've got a lot on our plate, and I'd really like to try and get an answer to this question.
Having a location is the least risky option for the city because it aligns us with the sleep center option and our anti-camping ordinance. If everyone will recall, when we went through the process of these court decisions, we were also facing increased scrutiny in regards to police actions, and the city is a member of an insurance pool that was providing guidance on how we would conduct business in the least risky manner. From this city's perspective, avoiding risk is a good thing for us to do because of our increased costs. So when staff provided options, that is the least risky option.
I do have a follow-up question regarding, and I always want to call you Richard, but it's not Richard, is it? Kevin, you do get a lot, okay, so I don't feel so bad. Kevin's comment, because I know we were really clear at a previous council meeting that we wanted to, we directed city staff to go into communications or discussion with the landowner regarding the current location of the sleep center. I know, sitting on the ad hoc committee as well, that we had a meeting, and I was fairly certain that it was discussed that there would be a meeting coming up shortly with the current landowner regarding an extended lease. So I'm a little surprised at his comment, and I'd like, I'd like to know what the direction is on that.
So, yeah, wait, can you hear me? We did, my voice is. So we did meet as the ad hoc homeless committee, and we made some decisions about what we'd want to do if we stayed on the site, and we agreed to pull together some additional information, which staff is working on, but he is correct. We did not reach out to him again. What we've done is started to get the site plan drafted of how we'd like to see it and the, quote, "for the pallet shelters" to make it more of a useful site than what we've got now because it's very temporary. But we'll send an email at the conclusion of this meeting to get that set up.
Thank you.
Councilmember Francher.
So, I still stand where I stand personally on this. We need, I agree, time is of the essence. I don't think we can pick a site today. However, we can start enforcing what we have. By the way, I also heard, which one doesn't provide risk? I don't think we can make a decision here ever without there being risk, ever, any decision. I work in a business that, I think, it's the designated broker, so all liability falls on my shoulders for my entire office. I take that pretty serious. It's a little scary, but I have to do that to move the next step. I hear you, I understand that one has more risk than another, but I'm willing to say we need to figure out how to make our community safer. I don't believe, because that was my comment before, about the RVs being moved to a different location, because the problem is, they don't have to go to that other location. It's an option. It doesn't solve the problem. It's no different than our sleep center. Those that choose not to use it don't have to go, and there still can be a nuisance. Some are not, some are. I would like to put our focus back into, quickly, for an ordinance review, make sure I agree that we fully understand how we're going to enforce it, how to enforce it. Do we need to offer the chief, figure out how to create more enforcement, which I know is this? But we have safety dollars, I believe, somewhere. Maybe they're not allocated right, looks like we better look at that, and figure out how to create a safer environment for our community. And that's where I would like to focus, so I'm not prepared to make a decision on the location. However, ramping up quickly, I would like to figure out how to give staff direction to use the resource that we have and enforce it. So I don't know what we need to do tonight on these items. I know it's not something that creates emotion, I don't believe, but I hope.
So I think we've heard the consensus of council. Staff will bring back then on May twenty-third the revised ordinance that our attorney spoke about. We'll also bring back a proposed staffing plan for additional shifts. I've had preliminary conversations with the chief in regard, and obviously, there is a dollar impact to that, but we'll have that both available for you on the twenty-third.
Councilmember Madewell.
First of all, I understand, excuse me, I'm sorry, that we are being watched. I do understand that, I hear that out in the community. As you sit and listen to us, you realize that it is a big situation for us. I only want it temporary. I don't want a permanent place for them. That's my opinion. That's how I feel about it. I'm for, you voted me in, you're who I speak for, and so I want to thank you for coming, for sharing your opinions. And I would ask one other thing. Please pray for us. We need a lot of it. Thank you.
Councilmember Skog.
I would probably concur mostly with the whole concept of the term homeless becomes a carte blanche term that allows you to do anything you want. I think what Gary Mann brought up about that the whole homeless group has taken precedence over the other residents, and that's just not acceptable. I would like to see some other ordinances passed. I've changed probably twenty padlocks on Conexes that have been ransacked over the last few years, and I don't think anybody needs to have a set of bolt cutters in their possession if they don't have a permanent address. I think there should be something written up. I would like to have the staff to come up and legally, a loitering law. We need to do something with our library so that other people can use it other than the homeless. The quick response, if we could come up with somebody who could, you know, make a, you know, as we're talking, security, you know, a quick response where somebody could say, hey, there's not necessarily police or fire, but just somebody could go, you know, here, get involved, come out here and see what's going on. I think we should have an ordinance that should say, doing drugs in public is, we don't accept that. You get arrested for that. There's just a lot of things that we're putting up with that we shouldn't put up with, and I think that the sooner everybody understands our level of acceptance or lack of acceptance, you know, their behavior will change. But I think the whole thing about the homeless having a carte blanche to do whatever they want, wherever they want, whenever they want, needs to come to a screeching halt. Andrew, you talked about us doing stuff tirelessly. I agree with that as far as the council's need. I will quote another friend of mine who said, oh, it'd only be a couple, two, three hours a week, and he should be grinning right now, but obviously, that doesn't work. It's taken a lot of time. I've spent a lot of time, I've listened to a lot of people in the last, you know, couple weeks. We take it seriously, but it's a complex issue, and it takes a lot of it. I don't know, maybe men in Moses Lake need to be part of a response team. I'm not necessarily saying a vigilante thing, but, you know, hey, here's a group of guys. No, 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 don't, don't, that's not, no, no, but I mean, somebody who can say, you know, if you have something in your neighborhood, if there's a group that can go, you know, come, you know, if six men went and talked to somebody and said, hey buddy, we don't do that here. I don't know, somewhere, but, you know, everybody just kind of walks by and pretends like it's not happening, and it is happening. And I don't expect little children to go up and gripe at somebody or you women to do that, but, you know, maybe we could do something like that and say something when we see behavior that we don't accept. I can remember getting, I almost used the word spanked word, but, you know, when you did something in the neighborhood, whether it was your mom or somebody else's mom, you got whacked. And, you know, you had learned, and you said, okay, I won't do that again. And maybe we need to just, you know, as a group, everybody, not just police, not just, you know, the hired people, but we all need to take a stand and say, hey, we don't do that here. And that's sometimes scary, you know, but I guess if it's worth fighting for, it's worth fighting for. Well, good point, but somewhere, I guess that's part of the risk we have to take.
So I'd like to chime in. I'm a little frustrated, I guess, with some of the information that I received previous to this meeting. I was under the understanding that we had to have a location if we were to enforce our parking regulations. So that's how we got to this point, I feel, that we were told we had to have a spot, just like the tents. So maybe I need to read that Long versus Seattle case a little closer. I have read it, and I really thought we were bound to have a spot. If that's not the case, let's just enforce our ordinance. I know we do have to have, we do have to have a spot to impound them to, because towing companies will not take it to their lot. So we're going to have to find that spot, and then we can't charge excessive fines. So it's going to be a little bit of a cost burden to the city, but I think staff has direction from council for the next meeting to have those things in place. Any other comments from the council? Councilmember Skog.
With the money that has been set aside for, whether that was a purchase of property or make a facility, that was quite substantial, I don't have any problem at all talking about spending that money in situations that are related to the whole homeless situation. I mean, it's all, whether you put something in a place for somebody to live or put somebody to clean up their mess, it's all the same source. So I would like to even see an ordinance that the city of Moses Lake, with those funds, literally cleans up every mess, and we don't allow stuff across from Safeway to be in the bushes there for weeks and weeks and weeks. And, you know, part of, you know, there's a graffiti law, you know, why don't we have people, you know, clean up stuff right away? And I don't care if the city pays for it. You know, the homeless aren't going to go out and clean it up, so we might as well, you know, acknowledge the fact that we're going to have to clean it up and just do it, and not, I know, I don't want to live in their garbage, so. I'd use homeless money.
Councilmember Swartz.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Skog. I'm right there with you. I appreciate how freely you speak. Yeah, you know, as my comments earlier were that the citizens need to take ownership of our city as well, which I'm not up here to speak on high to any of you, that was not my intention. But yeah, I would encourage staff to definitely get creative as far as this goes. As Dave identified, there are probably funds out there that we've already collected that could be reallocated. And again, this just goes back to the public-private partnership. I would like to see us meet the public where they would like us to meet them, and I'm very much in favor of sort of the broken windows policy of policing. And while a lot of talk again is about homelessness, I think that we will find that about ninety-five percent of that same group of people is also drug addicts and criminals. And so we need to reframe this conversation, first of all. We are dealing with a drug problem in Moses Lake. This is not a homelessness problem, and there are a bunch of things that go along with that, other crimes. And so I am all in favor of, again, we need to come up with a real figure of how much we can spend on this, and then decide how can we respond to things like graffiti, broken windows, literally, those sorts of things to support the community who is hopefully going to support us back, so.
I think that's all we have for this topic. I suggest we move on.
And we do have at your May twenty-third meeting, code enforcement had already been planning for our presentation so that you can get an understanding of what is in our code and how they're enforcing it, so that will be helpful follow-up to this conversation. And we also have Renew coming to provide a report. We had had a request earlier from a citizen in regards to the behavioral health services and the access to them. So from there, we can move on in the agenda. I'll move my other item down to administrative reports.
Want to give one more chance, Serena, if you are online and ready to speak. I thought I heard somebody tried to chime in.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Name and city residence, please.
I'm Serena Borquez, Moses Lake, resident. I'm sorry about the council, I know that really, that you guys were talking about a big problem. Mine is kind of related, but I'm having a hard time getting my home occupancy work permit. I have an in-home childcare, and I decided to do it at the garage, and I'm having a problem because there's a city code that we're supposed to have covered parking. So I don't know, I know most of the people, they don't use their garage to put their car in there, they use it as a storage, or I know there's some houses that they don't have any covered parking like a garage. I feel it's a kind of related issue, like, I don't know, how can you guys help me? Thank you.
Would you guys like any explanation of what she's talking about?
Yes, please.
We discovered that she applied for a business license to have a daycare in her garage, well, just for daycare at home, and our code does allow for that, but when the building official went out to inspect it, it was determined that was in the garage, and a lot of improvements were made to it. Those are separate issues being worked on, but the thing that was told to her by the building official was that he can't change the code requirement that you have covered parking at your residence, and that if she wanted to get that address, she could approach city council. So she came and found me at the beginning of the meeting and filled out a card, and so I knew what she was talking about. I told her that we could address the other issues separately within the garage, like she enclosed the water heater, and that's against code, too. Right now, we're working on updates to the code, to the development code. I understand that in the past, there was some reason for the requirement to have covered parking, but I'll tell you what, my first month here, somebody came and approached me, and they didn't like the fact that we required covered parking. I don't know the history behind it, but I think she's wanting you guys to consider that, and if it's something you did, want us to change in the code, we'd have to hold And if it's something you did, want us to change in the code, we'd have to hold a public hearing to change the code, so. That's the backstory on this.
Councilmember Martinez or Deputy Mayor, sorry.
It's okay. Sorry, there was a lot of noise as people were, as people were leaving, so she, there's an ordinance that says you have to have covered parking, otherwise she doesn't get to have a permit to do childcare.
She could do childcare in the house. I've not been there, I've just been told it's, it's smallish living room and all the upstairs areas, houses. Oh, okay, you know the homes.
I was involved in the sale. It's a two-story home that we, matter of fact, we asked that she check it out with the city regarding doing the, the daycare. It's a two-story home with a double-car attached garage that has entrance into it, insulated. She wanted to convert that into a daycare or at least part of that for daycare and went through it and found out that we have an ordinance, I think it's irrelevant of the daycare, if I'm correct. We have an ordinance or code that requires you have covered parking, period. Correct?
That is correct. It's in your code, our code, Moses Lake code. Somewhere in the past history, some city council members decided it was, it must have been an important issue of the day. I, I don't know. To be quite frank.
Okay. I would like to look at that and, and consider getting rid of it. Yeah, especially considering, and it, and it, I mean, we can look at it, definitely. And Councilmember Panter said it has nothing to do with the daycare, but for me and for all the families in the city of Moses Lake, we are in a daycare desert. So if there's anything that is holding this woman up from getting a permit to allow her to have a daycare, let's figure out how we can help her, please.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes, so is there some action we as a council could perform tonight to expedite the issuance of the, the permit to operate or whatever in, you know, contravention of the laws that we have in place?
Well, maybe I'll let Catherine.
Some sort of exception we can make?
Answer that, but typically we would require at least one public hearing to amend the ordinance.
So would it be just as quick to have code language ready for the next meeting and we can just get rid of that?
So I, we have the miscellaneous code amendments coming up at the next meeting. We have a public hearing advertised. That is the opportunity for city council to, can they add a use like that since it's an advertised public hearing and we are making amendments to our code? So we may be able to just take care of it that way at our next regular meeting. Coincidentally, we had a public hearing advertised.
I like that, serendipity.
Yeah, I was going to say the public hearing portion would be challenging, but yes, like advertising it.
Okay, and is she still on? Okay. So.
I checked up some of her. I'm here.
Okay, just making sure you heard all of that so that we're working on it.
Yes, I did. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
And then we'll need to work with her separately. She needs to uncover the heater and some other code issues, but she won't be able to operate it unless that code amendment takes effect.
Councilmember Scogg?
You know, when, I understand the covered parking and, and at least where I always grew up, all the garages turned into family rooms, but do that as it may. Does it, to change the covered parking thing, change the whole architecture of every house that's being built right now? If you, if you say, if we don't have to have covered parking, where, I mean, all the new neighborhoods and everybody's got a garage or two doors, I mean, does, does that, does, does to get rid of the covered parking ordinance change everything architecturally?
So what I would say right now is, first of all, it says covered parking, it doesn't say two-car garage.
Okay.
So it could be a carport.
I mean, can it be one of those little portable things?
But what I'm telling you is, do you think, most people want a garage. I mean, in this case, it was kind of a unique scenario. I don't know that a builder is looking to circumvent not putting in two-car garages.
Okay.
I guess it's, I mean, I think we should talk through it. I mean, I think we should have a presentation and the thoughts of what are the pros and cons, but, but covered parking is not a garage.
And I will tell you that we, most codes have language about required off-street parking. You have to have at least two and you have enough, enough space for that, but I've never seen another code that reads this way. And we were planning to not include it in the new code. It's very odd.
Okay. Thank you for the comment. It definitely helps to bring things up that we may not be familiar with, so appreciate it. We do have a public hearing for the Refuge at May Valley Development Agreement Ordinance 3024. We'll kick this off by a presentation by Kirsten Sackett.
Yes, Community Development Director Kirsten Sackett. And Greg, is the screen sharing going to work? Does it need to be? Okay, it's all good. Honestly, this should be a fairly basic one to bring forward to you, but we have an approved subdivision. I'll actually switch to a different screen.
I'm going to step out. I, I'm, this, I may, I don't even know you, but I may impact.
Okay, so this is in reference to a development agreement for a previously approved subdivision. It's the Refuge at May Valley, major plat first edition. And I had a, an aerial photo that just shows you the location. So this area of property off of West Lake Road, which is right next to the freeway and Hanson Road. And when they were doing the final design, it turned out that in order to provide a safer street design, it would impact this property right here, if you can see where my arrow is, this square piece. Go back real quick to the aerial photo. Right here is the location of a well. It's a rectangle, not a square, be accurate. Turned out that they would need to either purchase a portion of the city property to construct this road that you can see curves around or enter into a different agreement. And so the municipal services staff and community development worked with them to, with the developers to come to an agreement that's included in this agreement. And what it states on page 14 of your packet, sorry, it all boils down to section 12, where it says the developer agrees to design, construct, and pay all associated costs for the required street and utility improvements, including but not limited to road surface expansion, sidewalk, curb, and gutter along this stretch of road, along the city property. So in exchange for this property to be used for their road, they would build a curb, gutter, sidewalk improvements along this street, along that stretch. And they'd be building the rest of the stretch anyway. So as you continue to read section 12, in consideration for these developer improvements, the city of Moses Lake agrees to permit the developer to utilize a portion of the city's well 31 site for the construction of a public roadway. And the cost of those services are valued at approximately $32,000 and so that the exchange for the property was made. A development agreement is a voluntary contract between the city and a person who owns or controls property within the jurisdiction. It details the obligations of both parties and you are required to hold a public hearing in order to consider entering into a development agreement. And I would say in the world of development agreements, this is a pretty small one. Don't touch things, Richard. Just kidding. Crazy, don't touch paper either. So what we've got before you is a development agreement. You've got an ordinance that would need to be passed. It's ordinance number 3024. And then you've got an attachment, which is a development agreement itself. And then you've got a couple of exhibits that just detail the work to be done. So you've got these exhibits here showing the, the area of the property. This next one shows a little bit more detail, the zoomed-in portion, where you can see this triangular piece is what the city would be granting to the developer and then they would build the improvements right here. And then you've got a section, here we are. I don't know if it means much to folks, but just so you know what the exhibits are, there, there's also, here we are, the construction plan set that just shows what they'd be constructing there. So we've tried to give you all the details for that. And so at this point, staff is simply recommending approval of adopting ordinance 3024 in order to enact the development agreement.
I will now open the public hearing to call for public testimony. Is there any public in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Is there anybody online that would like to speak? I will now close the public hearing. Open the floor for council discussion or questions. Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve ordinance 3024.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Onto the consent agenda. All items listed are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We'll wait for, sorry, Councilmember Panter. So there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Old Business 2023 Supplemental LTAC Funding Recommendations. We'll turn this over to Rich Heebner, Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And ironically, if not for the recording, I probably wouldn't even need the microphone if you have come to know me at all. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, happy to present the Moses Lake Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's Supplemental Funding Recommendations for 2023. At your meeting on November 8th, my second day on the job, you all approved the initial recommendations of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, which totaled $386,569 of funding, spread across 14 applications. As part of your, as part of your recommendation that evening, or excuse me, as part of your, your action that evening, you approved a, an application or an award, excuse me, of $5,000 to the Grant County Fairgrounds for the Moravita Festival. However, you remanded that application back to the LTAC for further consideration should additional funds be, come available after the year-end tabulations of that, of that fund. So the LTAC met again on, on Friday, April 21st, and it considered both the remanded application as well as three requests, which each came from the city of Moses Lake. The first was a revision to the previously approved Visitor Information Center budget. That request did not include any, asking for any additional funds, simply reallocating within the budget itself of, of some of the dollars. The second application, which was one that was referred by you as city council, was a request to fund the fireworks for the Red, White, and Boom celebration on July 1st. And then I presented an application for a subscription to a visitor data analytics program called Datify. Finding a reliable source of visitor analytics in order to give us better data about who's visiting our community, where they're coming from, what, what they are visiting for and what else they do while they're here, has been a priority of the LTAC, not only to get a better idea of that, that overall visitor profile, but to help them make their determinations of what our primary funding and also help us as the city answer the questions that we have to, that we have to answer to the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee about how we use these funds and how much tourism that created. So I made a recommendation based on my experience with my, my prior jurisdiction to subscribe with Datify. And real nuts and bolts, Datify is a company that tracks users who voluntarily allow their location to be tracked through apps on their phone. It is entirely anonymous. We do not know that Rich Heebner came from Monroe to Moses Lake. We know, if I allowed my location to be tracked, which I don't, we would know that a 36-year-old male came from Monroe to Moses Lake. So we get that visitor profile without, without it being intrusive. So that was the recommendation for the visitor analytics agreement. The lodging tax, in your packet, there's a background on the history of the lodging tax, how it's imposed and what it can be used for. The LTAC members voted unanimously to submit to you the following recommendations for your consideration. Number one, the Moravita Festival, which is the application remanded by you back to them. The recommendation is an additional $5,000. That would be added to the original 5,000 that was approved by you last November for a total allocation to the event of $10,000. The Visitor Information Center budget revision is recommended for your approval. The Red, White, and Boom fireworks has been forwarded to you for consideration of an award of $27,000. Just as a note, that would come from the city's 2% of the, of the collection as opposed to the LTAC, and I will explain that in just a moment. And then the Datify Visitor Analytics, the total cost of that subscription for one year is $13,451.20. The recommendation is to, is to approve that as well. So the total recommended allocation before you this evening is $45,451.20. The amount is available within your adopted budget based on the collections that were tabulated in the LTAC fund. So just two notes, I mentioned a moment ago that one of the funds comes from the city's 2%. There are actually two separate 2% charges that are imposed on lodging that were enacted by the city council many years ago, based on two separate city law, or excuse me, state laws that allowed for that collection. So while the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee has authority under state law to make recommendations to you of how to use the full 4%, the, the, the standard operating procedure has been that 2%, one, one 2% collection is basically overseen by the city and dedicated to city projects that the LTAC recommends. Those have primarily been capital projects. And then the other 2% is the LTAC collection, and those funds are primarily awarded to events and marketing of the city as a tourism destination. So in this case, the LTAC did approve, or did recommend that you approve funding the fireworks out of the city's 2% that funding is available. I just provided that information as a note of where that, where that funding would come from. They also recommended, and city staff is prepared to go forward with this recommendation next year, that, as you all know, the city stepped up and took on management of the Red, White, and Boom Festival this year when our, our previous event promoter did not apply. So the city is managing that event this year and a big tip of the cap to Dolly Boyd and Doug Coats, our Parks, Recreation, Cultural Services team, all of them, their entire team, Bill Ockett, Kerry Hoines, everybody else I can possibly think to mention from that department is really stepping up for us this year. The recommendation from the LTAC is that next year we issue a request for proposal or qualifications to seek a professional event organizer for us, not only to really bring that event to its maximum potential, but also to really relieve our, our staff of some significant commitments over holiday weekend. So with that, that concludes my report. The recommendation, again, approval of a total allocation, $45,451.20. Mr. Mayor, I am available for questions.
One additional caveat.
Yes.
One of the long-term goals of the Lodging Tax Committee was to set aside a percentage of the, the dollars earned for a future capital project. They also recommended that that set aside be on both portions of the 2%. So when the budget comes back to you, you will see that there is a, a nice fund that's starting to build there where we can think about future potential uses for lodging tax funds for a capital project.
And my appreciation to the city manager, I included that in the fiscal and policy implications and not the overview, so skipped right over that. Thank you, Austin. That concludes the report. Mr. Mayor, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Scogg?
What fireworks?
What fireworks are worth, I haven't any idea. I guess what I would be curious about, though, on that proposal, is the Datify. How much data do you get? Do you get responses from 27 phones or 2,700 phones? I mean, it just seems like a lot of money for tracking phones, and how much data do we get?
Give me one quick second, council member, and I can pull up the proposal that was provided for that. While I'm doing that, I would mention that the funds for Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, by state law, they are limited to be used for four very specific purposes, for tourism promotion. So I appreciate your question. It's an opportunity to point out for yourself and everyone listening, these are funds that are very limited in their use, so these would not be funds that would be coming from the general fund that could fund something else. So I appreciate the opportunity to provide that clarification. And I am just getting to Datify files right here. So we have the opportunity through this program to create what are called five clusters, five visitor clusters within the community. And those, two of those are pretty automatically any of our outdoor attractions. So you think of the tournaments that happen at Paul Lager Fields, Larson Playfields, the ice rink. That's going to be our primary tourism attractions are going to be one cluster, and then our lodging community is going to be another cluster. So one of the great things about this program is that in that data that we are collecting, we're going to be able to, we're going to be able to know, okay, this particular person stayed at the Holiday Inn Express, and they visited the Fourth of July Festival. So it's not just knowing that they came to one thing, but how long they were here and what else they did in the community while they were here. So there are, that is through a process called geolocation. So, you know, they draw kind of a virtual line around a location, and if you step within that line for 15 minutes or more, you're counted as a visitor to that location.
My wife does that to me on 360.
Perfect. There you go. So there are over 150 million active monthly users that allow their geolocation to be tracked.
In our area, our geographic area?
Within the United States. But what that does is if you're coming from Spokane, Seattle, Portland, Nashville, anywhere in the country, you carry your cell phone, you allow your location to be tracked, and you come within the city limits of Moses Lake, we're going to know that you're here. And then if you go to one of the locations within those five clusters, we're going to know that you went there. And again, it would not tell me that David Scog went there, but it would tell me that a male of approximately your age from this location visited Moses Lake for this amount of time.
I have no idea why somebody would sign up for that. I guess I would be curious as to how productive that is. It seems like with software, it's real easy to, $1,000 here a month, $1,000 there, and then it gets in the closet and nobody processes the data, and it just kind of becomes one of those things that you just buy and it doesn't do anything for you after a while.
So I think that one of the most important, couple of the most important things that this program would do would be to, it would allow us, so when we ask the Moravita Festival or any of the other events that happen in town, we have to ask them particular questions, such as how many people overall attended, how many of those people stayed here overnight, how many of them came from 50-plus miles. We have to ask them those specific questions because we have to report that to the state. So those are questions we ask them because we get asked as well. So what this program really does is it allows us to have a much better understanding of what those answers should be. One of the questions, when you submit that report through the J-LARK and it asks you, okay, what's the number and how did you get there? One of the options in a dropdown menu is structured estimate, and that's most often the answer because somebody kind of looks at the crowd and goes, I think there's X number of people here. That's oftentimes the level of analysis that we get. So it will give us better data to report to the state. It will also allow us, we get all this information in a dashboard, we log into a website and take a look and get all that data that I've described. What it will allow us as city staff to do is to be able to provide a report to the LTAC so that when that event comes back and applies next year, they can look at that data and say, did this really generate tourism? Was this primarily locals? So as they look to make their decisions about what programs to fund with a pot of money that is very specifically, it has to generate tourism, it has to be used in these very four specific ways. And one of the reasons that the Moravita Festival was remanded by council back to the LTAC for further consideration, it was awarded a relatively small amount because we had this much money and we had this much in requests. So as the LTAC looks to make those really important decisions of how much money to give to different activities, this data will really help them prioritize what events really have an impact for our community.
That, I get that, and that makes sense. I just would, let's weigh that, how much data we get and was it enough to be significant?
Absolutely. And the LTAC and you as council as the ultimate approvers after this first year, you'll be able to look at what we gathered and was it valuable? Do we want to continue it, or was one year enough? Absolutely.
Councilmember Swartz.
Yeah, you answered some of the questions I had. Is it a fair amount of work for staff to get the data inputted?
I appreciate that question, council member. It's really not. Datify is the data collector. They take all the data, they input it, and then we log into a website and it's all there in a nice dashboard, and we can really manipulate the data to, manipulate is a bad word, but we can modify, you know, it's going to tell us, here's how many people came in this month, this year, and where they came from, but then we can go in and tell it, well, that's great for a month, what I really need are these three days around Fourth of July.
No, I, yeah, I get that, but at some point, I would assume somebody has to be told which, so it's fairly easy. You're going to say, this property, this property, this property, here's the boundaries, or they figure that out?
Yep, yep. So we'll have a meeting with them. I'll meet with my colleagues internally and really figure out, okay, you know, we've got all the hotel properties, that one's pretty easy. We give them the addresses, they put the geo fences in, and then a month later, we log in and see how many people went there.
And then is this data also going to be available to the general public?
Absolutely. It's a public record, just as any other program that we would run as a city. So it'll be provided to the LTAC at their meetings. Anybody from the public could, you know, the promoter of, this actually, the idea of it, for me to bring forward as a recommendation came from a discussion with Sean from Springfest. He was asking me, what's a way that we can go about getting better data? So there's a desire for it in the community, among our event promoters, and we will happily share it with them.
Well, you should have started with that.
You helped me remember that. Thank you.
Councilmember Francher.
Much. You guys hammered it. I've been associated with this, and I tell you, from the tourism side, they get some great feedback. That's where you want to know, is where are my people coming from?
Yeah. And to that point, thank you, council member, that's the other thing that that data will tell us, is where they're coming from is where we should be targeting our marketing. So that will also help us be much more, much more determinant in where we target our marketing to help draw folks to town.
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
Just to be clear, because I completely agree with David, because I'm anti-apps. This is only part of the decision-making as to who or what organization or what festival, whatever, gets, right?
Absolutely. It's data that'll be provided to the LTAC, they still ultimately have the final decision-making authority. And for you as users, you know, when you open a new app on your phone, you just said you're really, you're negative to it, and I don't blame you, I am too. There, you know, I'm an iPhone user. I open an app and the first thing it asks me when I open it for the first time, can we track your location? You have the option as the user to click yes or no, and so if you click no, we get nothing. It is a fully voluntary participation program.
As long as there's some reassurance that, yeah, that's not the only data point utilized to decide who gets funding.
Absolutely. Yep. Just giving them more information to use in their review process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Swartz.
Yeah, on that same note, and I think to Dave Scog's question about frequency of use or participation in the thing, there are a number of apps on your phone that you're going to sign up for that you agree that your location is going to be tracked. So the majority of people are being tracked in one way or the other. So you're going to guess at any event that we have, at least 50% of the people there. Yeah, exactly. I consciously let them track my data because I have nothing to hide, but you'd be surprised. I think the participation is not going to be an issue from that standpoint. We'll get our money's worth. It's just, I was more concerned how we're going to use the data, and not to Deanna's point, but just functionally, and I think Mark and others explained that, that it is useful.
Thank you.
Councilmember Francher.
I use it for my business, because I can tell people that are looking in our community and where they're coming from. My industry uses it a lot. How do I know who's moving to our community, and then where do I need to target market to? It's been, and by the way, this isn't new technology.
Yeah, absolutely.
I do have one more question, though, sorry. It's a drum I beat frequently. I know we have other people in our community doing things on behalf of tourism, so I just want to make sure, I know at the county, they have Grant County Tourism Board, might want to reach out to them just to let them know we're doing this.
Sure.
They may want to pay for some of it. I don't know.
I think that's a very fair conversation. Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Staff is looking for a recommendation to approve the funding as presented.
I'll make that motion to approve the funding as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. If there's any other discussion or questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Water Conservation Code Fee Update Ordinance 3025 and Resolution 3938, presented by the Water Resources Committee.
That falls to me. So appreciate, again, your time earlier today to go through our presentation of what we've been working on and some of the history and reasoning behind this code update. And so just in the essence of time, I think we've presented what we wanted to present earlier. If you have any specific questions or comments on the code as presented, we would take that at this time. Otherwise, we would ask for, to get this ordinance in place in time for the summer irrigation season. That's coming upon us very quickly.
We do have some public comment. Two people, so we'll start with Harold Cross. I apologize, Cross, if I said it wrong again.
Please. Let us be sent tonight. It's my.
Okay. Okay. We will move on to Kim Lamb. Name and city of residence, please.
Kim Lamb, Moses Lake. I am concerned about only being able to use water for three days a week. We live in a desert, and that will kill my freshly sodded lawn. That creates dead brown grass that we all know causes lots of dust and lowers my property values, brings in weeds, which may bring in code enforcement for tickets because I'm not caring for my yard. And so my question or concerns, I guess, is we have a treatment facility that's treating water and dumping it on the ground, I think roughly 2 million gallons a day, and I'm wondering why the city isn't utilizing some of that water that's being dumped on the ground for the water use that's happening in the city. The big trucks that fill up from the water, I'm thinking hydrants maybe, to water the construction sites where new construction is coming in to keep the dust down every day. That's got to be huge. Those are big trucks. When the wastewater trucks are out clearing the lines, pulling water out of the fire hydrant and flushing, that's got to be a lot of water. Those are big trucks. Cleaning out the other trucks in the city or washing, is that water not able to be utilized somehow? It's treated. I know many places treat their wastewater and drink it. Could we not put some of that to use in trying to conserve water and let me keep my yard, let me keep my property value? Sorry, I drank all my water a long time ago, my mouth's dry. It just concerns me that I'm being forced to conserve even more than last year, and what's the city doing to conserve besides dumping it on the ground? That's all.
I had a comment, too. On the blue form. Oh, did it have both on there? Okay, yeah, go ahead. Sorry. Got cut up in the pile.
Sorry about that. So again, for the record, Kevin Richards, Moses Lake. So I wanted to just talk about a couple things here. One is that as a leader of an organization, I feel like rushing to a decision or making quick decisions can be problematic and dangerous. I feel like managing a large ship as an organization can be, as a fast-moving Porsche, turning corners very quickly can be dangerous and lead to consequence. I will also say, you know, without arguing science, because I believe that conservancy is a very important, in fact, our obligation to conserve, so to say that as well is important. But I think that not having all the proper science directly in front of you, I think there's a lot of great presentations made to you tonight in your study session. I think that there's a lot of value to what was said. But I will say that the last report that you have specifically for this area was 2012. And so my concern was that you're making decisions based on an older report. We showed many, many reports that were listed, but you don't even accept a report from the private sector if it's five years old. So anything that was older than five years really should be, okay, is that still of consequence? Does that science still stand, instead of just showing a large list of reports? Especially because the one that's 2012 is, you know, dated, to say the least. So in my mind, before you made sweeping measures, and maybe these are important enough to make the measures, ordinance, but before you make sweeping measures, I would take contemplation, get a new study, be sure to be accurate, don't turn too fast, and make sure that you are precise in what you're asking of people and consistent. I think the other message I wanted to make for the last minute here is that I'm getting, as a resident, as a community member, business owner, getting kind of, my neck is getting a little bit whiplashed here because it seems like we go from crisis to crisis to crisis, which I haven't necessarily seen before. And to be honest, I don't know why we have to do that all the time. Instead of our horizons being a little bit longer and rolling something out over a longer horizon, I think that could be useful to people and not create so much panic. Lastly, I wanted to say this, when we're looking at water, which I buy and sell water, it's actually what bought my house, there's three things. There is wells, there's aquifers, and then there's the right to withdraw from them. So if we took all of those issues and we mixed them and set them all at the same time, it would seem like a whole catastrophic mess. And I don't think that necessarily all of it is a catastrophic mess right now. If you were to peel the layers back, I think that's important to take a strong look at. And lastly, we've made some fee increases. Let's let those take effect. Let's let the capitalist market take effect. And so that's what I challenge you to. People will come to their senses, you are billing them a good amount, let it happen. So those are my opinions, and I really appreciate your time.
We'll open the floor to the council, and if a council member wants to ask certain questions, they can. Councilmember Francher.
Well, I wanted to talk on something from city staff to answer the question.
Go ahead.
Does, can city staff answer some of the questions that Mrs. Lamb, is that correct, had regarding, can we use treated water? Hopefully you guys caught those questions. Thank you.
I'm Chad.
I'm Chad, the, Chad Strievy, the Water Division Manager for the City of Moses Lake. So under state law currently, Department of Health does not allow wastewater to be treated for drinking water in the state of Washington. They are currently looking at it, but it is not approved. Of course, California, Florida, East Coast, some other states, that is approved, and that is a method. Currently, that is not allowed in Washington State. As for, let's see, the construction trucks, we rent out hydrant meters to construction. That is about 2 to 3 million gallons a year used in those facility, or for that purpose. In the summertime, we average 16 to 17 million gallons a day for the months of July, August, and pretty much half of September. So that is a minute fraction of what would be saved. Yes, we are looking at other options for those, but as of right now, we are looking at the large users first, which is residential irrigation. You saw from the graphs, that is where all the water is going. What was the other question? Was it, any other questions?
The trucks fill up from the wastewater that's dumping around.
Or sewer flushing.
So, so they, wastewater, no. We have looked at using lake water for them. The issue is transportation to and from their job sites, time and money to the developers. So that is something we're looking at. So, yeah.
So, so the question on, I think you could probably answer this. So we went, when we went from no restrictions to water even, those that understand how irrigation works, basically, they watered longer. I mean, so are we, how much water, I mean, how do we quantify how much water we're actually saving? Or is it really about taxing the system differently? Because, because I don't, in certain locations, the bottom line is, if I have to water less, I'm gonna water much longer so I get a good soak. Because I would say this, a lot of soil types in our area will allow me to water three days a week. I have to water a lot longer to make that happen. So I guess that, that's part of my, my concern. If we're water, if we're conserving water, that means using less water. But we, in this ordinance, we don't tell them to use less water. We just say you can only water three days a week. But if I choose to water two and a half times longer each night, I'm actually using more water.
Yeah, so I just did a quick calculation. The average residential water meter is a 3/4 inch meter. Those are, you could get 15 gallons a minute through that meter. So if you watered 15 gallons a minute from 7:00 PM to 10:00 AM, that is 11,700 gallons. So that should be enough to water a residential yard three days a week, you know.
My question, though, is, is not the calculation. If I only water, if I water, I was watering much less time and watering more. I'm not suggesting that's necessarily the right method. I'm just, I'm just talking about wa, water conservation here, water, using less water. So if you have a person that you now say, I mean, do the calculation, I'm watering two hours on these three days, I'm gonna lose some time, I'm now gonna choose to set my clock that I'm gonna water five hours.
Right.
Or six hours, or whatever I think I need to do to keep my yard green, am I actually saving water? I guess that, that's my concern. We're, we're educating people to water much longer. Are we saving water or are we saving the system?
We are, we're, we're doing both. We are, we are saving the system. We're putting less stress on the system. We are, over time, I think you would find that they would start backing off that time, realizing that it's still staying green, and start backing that off a little bit each month. One thing to consider is that there's been several studies, one on the East Coast in North Carolina, and one in Southern California. I know that's a bad word, but they found that, that through conservation, conservation alone was not a steep enough reduction. Raising rates alone was not enough. You have to have a comprehensive approach, which means restrictions, price, and conservation education. So that's kind of what we're looking at.
Councilmember Madwell?
So I have some concerns with this. One of them was the sod. I have to get a permit to get sod from my yard.
So what we're asking is that you, it's gonna be on the public portal, which is connected to the website, city's website. You would fill out the form, and that way, when you do get your sod, we would just know what's going on. That way, when others call, they may not know that you just laid sod, but they see water going in the afternoon, and they say, 123 East Third is watering today. You can say, they have a sod permit. It's new sod, they have 14 days, and we are tracking that.
So what if my sod fails and I own, I am so sorry. What if my sod fails and for some reason I need to get more sod? Then what?
There would be, you, one permit per, the way it's written is one permit per customer per year. Obviously, July, August, middle of September are bad times to plant sod in this area. I understand that, you know, if you're moving into a house and you really want sod, then that may be the risk you take. But, you know.
So I'm going to be real honest with you. I don't like it. I understand wa, I understand water. I was raised on a farm. We irrigated. I lived in the city a long time. But I have a hard time telling the people that live in the city when they can plant sod, when they can't plant sod. You have to get a permit. We don't have a permit for the people that live in the motorhomes, sorry. And so, I am not doing well with that. I think irrigating every, like we have been doing June through September, to me, is ample. The other thing is, is that sometimes, you put in here that the rainfall out on the base would determine how we water in the city. I can tell you that sometimes it rains on the base and it doesn't rain in town. It snows up on the hill, but it doesn't snow downtown. So that's not a fair, I guess you can tell where I'm going with this. And so, I have one more thing. I noticed that the Larson Field, the state allocated $358,000. Did you read that? Okay. To get, I'm assuming the pipe is fixed. Have you, I read it the other day in the newspaper or in my news feed. So with that money, also, are we gonna be putting timers in for our parks so that our gentlemen don't have, gentlemen or ladies don't have to drive around and start the sprinklers? What are we doing? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not sorry, but I'm.
Yeah, Bill's not here. He was here earlier for the presentation. I, I know, I know they are looking at getting costs and budgeting that, those types of things. They more, they, you know.
So there was the $250,000 state grant that is for Larson Field too. And so, a project needs to be designed there to connect it to the lake. But now we have funding that will augment it. In regards to the timers, I think it's on the work plan.
Yeah, Jessica just mentioned it's on their two to five-year work plan that was in the presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Scott?
A couple things. I, I think it's dangerous to have legislation that people won't follow. I kind of agree a little bit with Judy on the sod thing. I don't know why there couldn't be something made that says reapply. You know, if you, if your sod's dying, reapply. And I think going along with what Kevin said, capitalism will somewhat kick in, and, you know, somebody will weigh, you know, now I'm into the third tier or whatever this month. So, yeah, I'll do it, but I maybe wasn't paying attention. So I think capitalism can be a big part of it, which, speaking of capitalism and the third-tier business, I think if we're doing that as a concept of trying to get people to conserve water, then I would somehow like to see a ordinance or motion made that all those funds from tiers, the excess funds that are generated in tiers two and three go specifically to find water and no other, they don't go to buy new trucks, they don't go to buy new equipment, they don't go to fund any other water stuff other than finding more water. And, and I'd like to see that happen, that, that the, not the baseline, but the added dollars from tier two and tier three are solely ratholed specifically for finding water. If that's the intent of those funds is to conserve water, then I don't want to see buy new trucks with that or go into the water department. I want it specifically for finding water.
Can I speak to that a little bit? So when we did the rate study back, what, previous council, when that rate study was done and approved, so the decision was made, we wanted a tiered structure to hopefully encourage conservation. But the tier one level was actually dropped. And so, in order to pay for what we have to pay for out of the water fund for the trucks, for the employees, for repairs, meters, so on, so, and so forth, if the tier one funds wouldn't cover it by itself. So, so it was structured so that if people were conserving and using the tier, tier one amount of water, they would actually receive a savings to their water use. So if, if we were to try to structure it that way, that we could use those tier two, tier three funds, we would have to completely restructure our rates and raise the tier one rates enough to pay for the water service and then, in order to then have the excess being able to be taken off for those other things. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I'd still like to do the math then on that. And, and, and see if, if somewhere along the way, that that, then, then I don't know that we need to necessarily give people a benefit or a bonus or a cheap rate for, for the water because they are conserving. I mean, if, if that's what it costs to get the water, and then, it just seems like if we're gonna, if we're gonna put, the whole capitalism concept is, let's, you know, if you want to use more, but then help us find more or raise the, the third tier higher.
So we're in the process of doing the water comp plan. Which is going to identify what our sources are gonna be and the capital requirements for that, which is gonna require us to update our rate study. So that will be coming because our former rate study was based on an incomplete capital plan and what our needs were, because it was an outdated plan. So that, that's, that's coming. It's headed our way. And that rate study will give you the full analysis of.
And, and part of, part of my thinking there is that, you know, when we use the words of dangerously low, and I know I kind of harp on that word, and forever chemicals, you know, if, if those words are being used, you have thoroughly agitated my concept of getting more water. And if we're talking $230 million of stuff, you know, that, that almost becomes the number one priority if we're really where we're at. And, which brings me to another one, where we've taken some wells out of production. I read in the Seattle Times that they've got PFOS in their water at 4,700 parts per trillion, and we're at four. And I'm kind of going, whoa, we're doing pretty dang good. And I don't know where zero fits, or even if, even if, I don't know how you measure something that's small, and was that a one-time test? Is it tested again to, you know, more than once? Does the EPA have a lot of data for that? But it seems like when you're testing something that is getting that minute, you know, was it a fluke? Maybe it's zero. Maybe it's 400, I don't know. But I would like to see if, when we've taken wells out of production, you know, is that based on a one-test deal? Maybe it was a bad hair day for the water. I don't know.
So we are going through a process to update those tests, and then we've had additional results come in where we actually have some higher numbers. So, yeah.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes, thank you, Allison, for sharing all that with us as far as where we are in the process. And I think that makes a lot of sense as to what the confusion is about here today. The issue, and to Dave's comments again, you know, we're being presented into Kevin's comments, we're being presented with the crisis. That is how it's been advertised to us. You know, the, using terms like forever chemicals and dangerously low, and that the only way we're gonna get through this is that we all need to conserve water and all of these things. That's a story that's out there. There's also a story out there that we're going to get, somebody said tonight, 70,000 people in the next 10 years, something like that. That's ambitious, but it's, it's not far off base if you think that way. So what are we really doing here? Are we making a decision if we're just going to pack up and leave because that's where we are? Or are we going to make a decision to accept 70,000 people here? Is that what we're doing? And it sounds like there's a lot of work that has to be done in order to determine what we're doing. You know, if we lived in Lind, Washington, we'd be having to make some very, very difficult decisions right now. Are we even going to be able to turn the water on tomorrow? And I think what we're hearing is a lot of confusion about where we really are with that. And, and where are we trying to be with that? Because if we cannot serve 26,000 people with water, how are we going to serve 50,000 people with water? And I don't know if you know, but there, you know, the governor has come here and said, we want to put all this growth here. So when we're trying to tell people that, hey, there's not even enough water for you here, but also we're planning on bringing a bunch more people here, as is the PUD, as are, you know, the Economic Development Council, a bunch of other entities have been working for years and years and years to try to attract all of these people here. And this conversation that we're having today is sort of a giant wet blanket on all of that. And it sounds like we need to do a lot more thorough investigation of where it is, number one, that we're trying to get to. I think there's a lot of people up here who have some pretty good ideas of where that's going. And then make these decisions in that context. For me, the major issue, I think, is finding more water. That is what we've been tasked with. If we're using more water out of the aquifer than gets dumped back into the aquifer, if that's true, and it sounds like there's some questions as to the validity of that information, okay, then, that's it. okay, then, that's it. We don't have to talk about that anymore. Now we can talk about finding water other places. It's not about how much we're going to charge the citizens or how much grass they can have on their property or all of that, because what happens for the next 50,000 people? So I'm not prepared to make any decisions about this at all until we get the rest of the plan figured out. Is it $100 million? Is it $500 million? You know, nobody can answer those questions at this point or nobody's willing to. I have a lot of people in the community, the farmers, other people that talk to me all about water all the time, and they have a lot of great ideas. I think we're jumping the gun here a little bit.
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
I remembered one of the things, Ms. Lamb, that you talked about, the conflicting codes. If you don't water the weeds, then you get fine. And that has been addressed with community development because I've had people bring that to me as well because we, our codes shouldn't contradict each other. I guess, Chad, thank you for being patient standing up there. So, you know, I'm looking at those graphs that you provided, the really heavy water days. So walk me through the summer when we have one of those water, really heavy water days and we have three, three wells offline, right? Correct?
Currently, we have shut down three wells. Wells 19, Wells 24, and 29. Well, 29 is, has the PFOS above the proposed EPA limits. Those limits, those limits are not in effect right now. We just got back a well 23's results today. That came in at twice what well 29 is. So that is at nine parts per trillion. I know that's a small amount, but EPA's proposal is four. So there are going to have to be some tough decisions made on this summer. If we continue not to use those wells, we will not have enough water. We have five wells at the base, Larson. Three of those have PFOS in them. One of them is dry in the summer and cannot be lowered. The pump is at the bottom. So that leaves us with one well. So what a summer day would look like is moving water from other parts of town, low reservoir levels, low pressures. After that, it would be air in the lines, cloudy water. People would call cloudy, I have, I have cloudy water. What is it? It's air. Fire flows would be affected. So then the determination is to either turn those wells back on and notify the public of what is in their water.
So there would be a notification to the public if we get to that point?
So as, as the operator in charge of the water system, I would not feel comfortable not letting the public know that they are drinking water above the proposed EPA limits. And I think the majority of people would like to know that.
Yes, I just wanted to say I fully agree with Dustin, all of his comments, as well as Judy. This is not the time to vote on this. We need a lot more data, a lot more discussion.
In regard to the update to the 2012, 2015 study, that was the presentation that I identified what happened at your work session on June 13th. So Kevin Lindsay, Geo Engineers, has updated all of that data and will be able to provide that information to you real time. So we'll look forward to that presentation as well.
So what would the council like to do? Are we tabling this until we get that information, June 13th?
I assume if we table it till June 13th, at least.
Motion to table both ordinance 3025 and 3938. Is that correct?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? New business, Larson Rec Center first quarter report. Doug Coates here? Oh, Carrie's back there in the back. I'm not used to that.
Yes, Doug is sick and so Carrie is pinch hitting.
Yeah, I'm good. Good evening, I'm Carrie Hoines, the Recreation Superintendent for the city. I'll be giving a report on the first quarter for the LRC and a fee schedule resolution. So quarter one, January. Is that better? I'll wait for some noise to go. Sorry, I have notes here too. So quarter one, January, February, and March. My presentation is not going. There we go. Okay, I'll start with facility rentals. We've had 14 facility rentals in February and March. This is including meetings, events, anniversaries, and birthday parties. We've had interest from groups and organizations such as the GTA, Chamber of Commerce, Conservation District, Farmers Market, Hockey Association, and more. Programs held at the LRC, some of the programs held have been, they're listed below, but some examples are drop-in basketball, pickleball, open gym, tot sports, Special Olympics, leagues, tournaments, and more. LRC day passes. So we've sold 614 adult day passes, 58 senior day passes, 417 day passes, 69 youth day passes, and had almost 2,000 in six and under and spectator admissions or free admissions. Here are our numbers of monthly and annual passes sold. You'll see adult monthly is our most popular, followed by senior monthly. You'll notice youth has zero passes sold, but they have limited access to the facility due to safety. But we are trying to increase that participation with getting creative with programming. For example, we've just added a monthly parent survival night for youth and teens, which requires a pass. Punch passes, 12 punches and a pass. Our numbers are, again, adult is the most popular with 37, followed by senior and teen Next, we're on to financials. So LRC revenue, please note, blue is the budget, orange is the committed amount, and gray is the percentage used. Here's a look at the revenue. First, we have LRC pass sales, and as you can see, we're only at 14%, which is lower than projected. But you have to remember that all of January was our open house or free period. So this is kind of only showing two of three months of potential revenue. We also plan to implement the Active and Silver Fit program very soon, which should increase past memberships. Yep, that'd be part of it. The other revenue is our LRC rentals. And on the other hand, we have exceeded projected expectations at 2,815%. Here's a look at the LRC expenses, salaries, and benefits. Again, blue is the budgeted amount, orange is committed, and gray is percentage used. We are under budget and temporary pay, but this could increase with additional programming and increased rentals. And again, we didn't have too many paid expenses in January yet. LRC materials, supplies, services, expenses. You'll notice LRC professional services is at 60% of its budget and the operating supplies is only at 15.89% of its budget. Under new management and with director changes, we're trying to more accurately assign costs to where they should go. So you may see some adjustments in those two areas in the near future, and it should be leveling out soon. Final financial slide is revenue versus expenses. As previously discussed, total revenue is down. However, we anticipate that to increase with the Active and Silver Fit programming and getting additional passes sold. Expenses is slightly over budget by 3.83%, but this should also level out. We've had to purchase some additional, or not additional, but we've had to purchase items on the front end of the budget for the LRC since it's a new facility. And that's it. I'm not Doug Coates, I'm Carrie. And if you have any questions, I can answer them or I can move into the fee schedule.
Thank you for that report. Is that, is that available in printed form or online?
Yes, this was in your packet, I believe.
Oh, okay. All right. I didn't see that.
No problem, it was there.
Okay. Couple of things. I have had some inquiries from other athletic club owners. They particularly talked about the group things. I can't see that from the passes, the quantity of that is going to have a big impact on their business, and if it did, they probably wouldn't be in business long. But having said that, I know, there was, the part of it that came up about the classes.
Sure.
And the implication was, is that maybe Larson was not going to have those classes or at least a smaller form of them. He felt that was probably what's having an impact of some degree on his.
To mine, yeah.
And the deal was, you know, does private money compete with public money? You know, and, and maybe it's insignificant and maybe, you know, I can say, hey, hey, here's what the club is doing, you know, there's not 400 members there this month. Now, having said that, when I look at the budget, we need 400 members. So it's a.
It's a catch 22. Yes, we always anticipated having group exercise classes. However, I can tell you, most of the classes either get canceled or we have one to three people in them. However, the facility doesn't have an aquatic center, you know, like Airway Heights does. So you have to have something to offer to the public, you know, in order to entice them to buy a pass. But to answer your question, no, they're not heavily, and they're not heavily participated in. And I think you had another part to that question, but now I forgot it.
Well, it was just, I know the comment was, you know, that I have to pay for my facility, the other athletic club people, and are competing with public dollars and just felt that was the question of why did you guys even do that? And, and there's probably a whole different client being served. And I, and I get that. And although I'm sure for athletic clubs, that Planet Fitness is sucking a whole lot of the oxygen out of that whole balloon right now. And then maybe that'll change, but it's, it's no fun to, you know, see something you've worked on for years, just kind of, in there, done that.
Yeah. And also, I guess, to further answer your question, with the Active and Silver Fit program, we do have to fulfill certain parts of that program. And so offering group exercise to seniors is part of that as well.
Okay. I think if I showed him those numbers, he probably would not be quite.
I can get you numbers, and like I said, they're not very high. We are kind of moving towards more of a senior-based group, group exercise classes. That just kind of seems to be what's growing at the facility. So that's kind of the use that we're seeing.
What age is the senior base considered?
Well, I'd say adult and senior because adult actually goes to 64, so I wouldn't consider that senior yet.
Councilmember Swartz.
Yeah, in considering the conundrum Dave pointed out that we need a number of patrons in order for this thing to pencil, a couple of questions. I'd be interested to see how many years it took for the aquatic center to break even or if it does today.
I think early on, it actually made money. I think now we have seen a lot of costs associated with upkeep of the facility to where we aren't seeing that same income or net income. Allison, if you have anything to add to?
Minus, minus debt service though, right? Because I don't think we ever allocate debt service against.
I don't know that. Yeah, I, I, that's just kind of my understanding of it.
Okay.
We can get you.
Yeah.
Historical.
Don't need to go too far in that. I'm just looking for any sliver of optimism I can get. But the other question I have is, you know, maybe it was in the packet as well, but with the idea that there's a perception we'd be competing with other entities in the private sector, are there services we can provide that aren't in direct competition but still stay within the spirit of having a rec center, for example, after-school programming? Now we're competing with the Boys and Girls Club, but I don't think they would mind that too terribly. Do we have that sort of thing? Is there a means of getting children bussed or otherwise delivered to the, to the facility after schools? Or have we perhaps entered into a partnership with the school district to serve the schools that are immediate in that proximity? Or what are we doing there?
Yes. So with the facility itself, the features, the walking track, nowhere in town really has the indoor walking track. Before, you'd have to go to Lowe's, Home Depot, Walmart. So there's that. And yes, I have explored those other avenues with Boys and Girls Club. We do hold our summer day camp there in the summer. However, I'm looking at doing before and after-school programming, kind of partnering with Peninsula. They used to have a program with the Boys and Girls Club, but they've ended that and the busing itself. So there is a need for that. They only have an after-school program, I think, called PAWS, something like that. So yes, I'm exploring that, possibly even a preschool. And you have to understand that this is just the facility itself. We hold Special Olympics programming there. We have our city leagues there. We have tournaments, et cetera. Rentals, I mean, part of the facility holds roller ice rink rentals. So this is just very specific to passes and rentals. The facility does much more.
That's encouraging. Well, just make sure you have covered parking also.
Yeah. It's too early to tell. I think it's too early to tell. Yeah, and I think that a lot of our use is actually going to be in the winter. Some of, you know, spring and summer, everybody's kind of outdoors. So we were heavily used. I mean, open gym was packed, complaining about city league volleyball. So yeah, there's a ton of use in the winter. We just have to explore, you know, getting our summer day camps in there in the summer. How do we fill the facility in, you know, kind of the deader times? And I think we are exploring and going in those directions.
So was our expectation, where our revenue would come? From September through February, so to speak, was that our expectation?
You being the current.
I didn't think so, but okay.
The current revenue, is that what our expectation is? Is that?
Was that our expectation that a majority of our revenue would come from September through February or March?
Yes, that was what we thought. We've also even explored different ideas. In the summer months, maybe we have an altered schedule of operating hours. Maybe we don't need to operate the same amount of hours if, you know, we aren't as busy. People are outdoors doing things. So do we look at cutting back on our hours to save with attendant costs, et cetera?
I made a recommendation before we opened the rec center of maybe partnering with the local gyms, because I know a lot of gyms operate Zumba classes or, or group exercise classes. But to have those instructors be able to come into the rec center as a paid instructor for a class, if you were charging a fee, it allowed people to get a taste of what that gym has to offer and maybe appease them where they're not saying that we're competing but partnering.
That's an excellent idea, and I need to pursue that more. We've had a little bit of that overlap, just like with the senior center. So our yoga instructor is from the senior center. But I would like to explore, we don't. But I would like to explore, we don't have any, no, to answer your question, no. I need to kind of explore how that would look.
Just some ideas, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a great suggestion.
If they would be willing to do it.
Yeah.
I guess it's up to them. Any other comments or questions?
So I saw that you're going to be renting roller skates. Back when we were kids, that was a big deal, Friday nights, Saturday nights, Sunday afternoon roller skating. Is that your expectation?
Yes. Yep, we have a Wednesday evening...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, Wednesday evenings, we'll have actually pickleball, free pickleball, before roller skating, and it'll go into roller skating. And then Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we have some free pickleball, and then it'll go into, roll into, roller skating. And we also have our grand opening coming up on the 20th. T-Mobile has sponsored 100, I think it's 100, free passes. You have to go to T-Mobile to get those vouchers, but to kind of help promote the facility and themselves.
So is the roller skating going to be on the ice rink?
It does turn, it's a dual purpose, yes. It's not on ice. No, it's concrete. It's on concrete, yes, but the same...
And music and all the good stuff?
I'm working on music. With the new LRC, there were some, the music got taken away, and so we're working on getting it back. I'd love to eventually get a disco ball. If you come into the LRC, we have our mannequin scene, and we've decorated it with roller skating, and we're going to get a disco ball. So yes, that's the feel.
Sure, we get to roller skate again.
There's no other questions? Looking for a motion to adopt resolution 3939?
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We can now move on to the administrative reports.
Okay, quickly. So you have the renewed quarterly report for the Moses Lake Community Coalition in your packet. I've been in a number of meetings recently where the Moses Lake Community Coalition has been present and is providing a great voice, particularly on the local mental health challenges. Council has asked for opportunities to interact with staff, so we're doing a wellness program employee barbecue on May 23rd, so we'll get you a lot of information on that. Just wanted to note that we had interviews for municipal services director. We're continuing our conversations with that candidate. Tony Masa has indicated that he'll be retiring effective the end of June. So I'll be going through a process to identify interim of that division, but just wanted to let you know that the staffing work still continues. And we did have Jim Richmond here with us tonight. I think he needed to, yes, seated our new technology services director, and I forgot to introduce him at the beginning of the meeting, so I'll apologize in the morning. So our, getting our cities staffed up, we're getting there, and the work continues. Richard Levi had a couple of successful grant applications, so Safe Routes to School and pedestrian safety programs. So we're getting those projects out there and funded through grant resources.
Yes, so the one, the Safe Routes to School grant, that, it's not complete complete, but we were informed that we are in the top tier, and it appears that funding will be available. This has to do with Nelson Road, so we went in and put that asphalt bike path in a year ago. We applied for a grant to actually completely reconstruct the road down there, sidewalks both sides, make it go from the county-style road to a city-style street. We were informed that, again, we were in the top tier, but it appeared that they weren't going to be willing to fund complete reconstruction. So we'll have to look and see what they're offering and see how that meshes with what we want to construct and how close we can get, whether we would have to come up with funds on our own. Originally, the grant would be 100% funded, but we don't have any money budgeted this year, or it wouldn't be this year. It would be granted this year. Construction would probably, would be most likely 2025, just based on the, when the award and then the design and then the construction, because we can't spend any money on design, we won't get reimbursed unless the award's been granted, so it's chicken and egg thing. And then the other one was for funding a pedestrian mobility study in the Stratford Road area, particularly Highway 17, Stratford Road. So again, this grant would be for a, a design and a plan for the area, not for construction dollars. So if we get this done with state money, we would then be an excellent candidate to reapply for actual construction dollars in the future after we can come up with that, so.
And the Stratford Road project has been a top priority of the trails planning team. They've been advocating for getting that project funded because of access of the neighborhoods north of Highway 17 into the city versus ped, bike, you know, those other modes of transportation. So we're glad for them to get this funded.
Can I ask a question real quick? Because I'm visual, can you explain a little bit more what you have in mind with that particular project, please?
The pedestrian...
Yes.
...project? So, you know, what we can do is circulate some visuals, but there was a study done, the studies that were done of Highway 17 identified deficiencies, yeah.
So it kind of stems from, we were able to get some planning dollars to do our Stratford Road corridor study back in 2019, I believe. And as part of that, we were looking at not only vehicle traffic, but pedestrian traffic in some of those areas. And there were some things, we went through a public, we had some public meetings, and people came in, and hey, what would you do in these areas? And some things that were identified were a pedestrian link, either bike trail or multi-use trail between Stratford Road and Randolph Road, to try to create a link going out towards the college. And so that was one thing that was identified. And also, the deficiencies in the link across the bridge over 17 right now, those pedestrian facilities are, they're atrocious. Sidewalks are, nothing meets any kind of standard. And so, again, these dollars are to do a deeper dive into, identify actual projects and costs associated with that. The highway, the overpass there on 17 is going to be very expensive because we're going to build real sidewalks. You actually have to either lose lanes or widen the bridge.
Or hang them over.
Or if the bridge can handle it. So, I mean, there's all kinds of things that you have to do to identify that, and we're also going to be looking at maybe how to phase an approach to get a, some sort of a pedestrian link either parallel to 17 or through some other route to get out to Randolph Road. So these are all things that will be explored with this planning effort to, again, it's to get to the point where we have identified specific projects and estimated costs so that we can then go for more money from the state to actually build them.
And then just a reminder that the AWC conference is coming up. The, it's, the annual conference is always a great opportunity to be with other elected officials and get training. The registration ends, it may have already ended, but we have some opportunity to get additional registrations, June 20 to 23. So if any council members have a desire, please let us know ASAP in that regard. And those were all of the items, unless I'm missing anything for admin reports. It's in Spokane this year.
Is that everything for administrative reports? Council committee reports, we'll start on this end with Councilmember Eck.
All right, the port still has 156 737s, and the airshow, which will be Father's Day weekend, is way ahead of last year's ticket sales, so that's going to be an incredible We haven't yet fully nailed down exactly all the aircraft, but at this point, we're going to want all of our kids and grandkids and all their kids out there at the airshow. The railroad situation is coming along, we're making good progress. I think three more parcels were purchased this week. And then there's a new aerospace manufacturing company taking a strong look up at their port. And then the other thing, our little municipal airport had a phenomenally fun demonstration of stole aircraft last Saturday. It was 65 degrees, I was able to put the top down in my convertible and just watch the whole thing happen, it was beautiful. That's all I have.
Councilmember Scott.
Well, a real fun finance committee, it's always fun to do that.
Why don't you do the finance committee? That's right. Okay, go for it.
Thank you. Again, like I've said before, we're still spending money. There didn't seem to be anything real earth-shattering. Some miscellaneous stuff, I guess, no big deals. So I think it kind of was as expected.
Is that everything? Is that all you got there?
That's all, okay.
Councilmember Fancher.
Nothing to report till next time, all my stuff's afterwards.
Councilmember Madewell.
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Swartz?
No, I just realized I sit on a grand total of one committee, so I have light duty here.
Deputy Mayor Martinez?
I can give you some. Councilmember Swartz? Grant County Health, our homeless and housing task force, I think is the two H's. We're just still trying to get our feet on the ground, what direction we're going to head in. I know that Commissioner Jones is, you know, open to listening, to potentially helping the city of Moses Lake with some of their, our tough decisions about the RV parking, the sleep center. But he's very clear to note that he is only one of three commissioners, and so if we are going to be looking at working with them, we need to be talking to our other commissioners as well, so. Public Safety Committee meeting, we talked a lot about the RV parking, which we've addressed tonight. Fire did have some time regarding the...
CARES program.
Yes, the CARES program, that was one of the things, but also the response times, response times. So we'll be getting more information about that, but I did want to share about the CARES program. I know that it was a difficult decision for some council members to agree to allow this CARES program, because it's a grant fund, you know, are we beholden to anything? But the CARES program has proved itself very effective in lowering the cost of, and time, of our fire department and our EMS on a couple of these high users. They've actually been able to locate them to other facilities and outside of Moses Lake, from what I understand. So definite cost savings, if I recall correctly, one of the cost savings projected, just based on this one person, if you were to compare the person's use last year to this year, with this person now being taken care of at another facility out of town, we're saving $85,000 because of just this one person. So they're continuing to do more work to identify other high users so that we can continue to see a cost benefit to this, implementing this program. So I thought that was really good news. So just wanted to share that feedback, because we don't always hear that feedback, we just, you know, kind of, yeah, okay. So I want to make sure the whole council knew about that. Let's see. Ad hoc homeless committee, public meeting, everybody knew about, we were here. And then the finance committee, I don't really have anything additional to add to what David said. I think that we are looking at the community development, requesting an additional person to help with the caseload, and that'll be coming to council in the future.
I have nothing further to add, four minutes shy of 10 o'clock. Next regular council meeting is May 23rd.
Can I add one thing that has nothing to do with any of the committees? Can we potentially look at these chairs? They're really loud. Yeah, yeah. Replace them, oil them, I don't know, yeah. If you don't mind, in time for next meeting.
I know I don't get a vote, but as the guy whose chair sinks when he leans back, I would like to support the deputy mayor's request.
Next meeting is May 23rd. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending.